I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ann, are you going to take a roll call?
Sure. Here.
McManus.
Here.
Robertson.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Be good.
Just in time.
Fudge.
Here.
Next, I see on the agenda, it's time for our annual election of officers. I don't know if we want to mix things up or what the folks want to do this year.
I'll make a motion that we keep it the way it is.
Any further discussion on that motion? Joe and Joe okay with that?
I guess. It's a lot of work, but.
Are we going to get a pay raise?
Oh, well, no.
We'll call the question. I guess all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, same bunch another year. Next up on the agenda is public comment. We have two public comments scheduled for each meeting, one at the beginning and one at the end. If there's anything that anybody would like to tell us about, feel free to come forward and do that. We also have one public hearing scheduled for the evening, which may or may not go forward regarding the Traverse City Christian childcare at the Church of the Living God. And if somebody wants to talk about that, you could, but it's probably more effective to hold your comments until we actually get to that particular item on the agenda. So, at any rate, if anybody would like to come forward and ask or tell us anything, feel free to do that right now. And as usual, there's not much public comment, so we'll move along. Next item on the agenda is to review tonight's agenda, and if there's any conflicts of interest, we should hear about those. And if not, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next on the agenda is a review of the minutes from our December 14th meeting. Does anyone have any suggested changes to that draft?
I'll make a motion. We adopt the minutes as presented.
Support.
Any discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next is correspondence. John or Steve, any correspondence you want to tell us about?
Nothing other than what's in your packet. This is a letter from Haggard's Plumbing and Heating. That's it.
All right. Moving along then, next item is reports. Molly, anything on behalf of the town board to report tonight?
The town board passed the Burnley Hills subdivision through, so.
Okay.
So, that's nothing else.
Thanks.
John, you're going to talk about the road commission. The planning commission's going to be invited to the road commission coming at the end of February.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll cover that.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Molly. Bob, any zoning board of appeals, things to report to us?
We have not met, but we are going to meet tomorrow night at six for our organizational meeting.
Okay. Chris, anything on the Parks and Rec Committee?
Nothing to report other than the Parks master plan went to do the township board.
And passed.
And passed.
Awesome. Way to go. Joe, we haven't done anything on the joint planning commission for a while, have we?
No, and John reminded us we moved our January meeting to February, so we won't have anything for another month.
All right. Staff report.
Yeah, I got one item. Steve's got another item, but as Molly mentioned, they, as happened last year and a couple years earlier than that, there was been a joint meeting between the township board and the planning commission. Particularly makes sense to have another one as we're kind of moving along through the master plan process. Initially, what we're thinking of doing is for February 28th, which is actually Tuesday. It's the regular, the second regular meeting of the township board for February. So, it's the fourth Tuesday of February, and that would be where the planning commission would join the township board. There is plans to have a presentation there from the Grand Traverse County Road Commission to talk about projects that they are working on that impact the township. So, what we would do in lieu of having your study session that is planned for February 22nd, we would cancel that and then, or, and then schedule for you to be at the February 28th meeting. So, let us know if you're unable to make that, but I think that's kind of the general plan right now. We'll confirm that later, so this is just kind of heads up at this time, and we'll get back with you.
And that's at six o'clock?
That's at 6:00 PM, correct. Yeah, that's town board starting time.
That's when they show up, huh?
Yes.
All right.
Steve's got, yeah, a couple of things. So, we did put our monthly report for the board also in your packet. We also wanted to comment on, so, early in the fall last year, we, planning commissioners had, we discussed Nicolet Bank and the landscaping that had been taken out. We did talk earlier this week with a landscaper who's going to be working on behalf of them and went over the process of what they need to do to submit. So, we'll be coming back to planning commission. They're working on it right now, because it will involve changes to the landscaping. The original landscape plan just showed leave this as is, and it wasn't really enumerated. So, we got to figure out the buffer. They need to measure how much it is and meet the current buffer standard, landscaping standards for that. So, they are working on that, probably not till March at the earliest, maybe April, when they'll actually be before the planning commission, but that will be coming back. And I think that's it.
All right. Moving on into unfinished business, item 6A is Planning Department Report 2023-7. We're supposed to have a public hearing on the TC Christian School childcare at the Church of the Living God for an SUP, but I gather there may be some modification to that?
Yes. Chris Butts, I'm the superintendent over at Traverse City Christian, and we've had some recent changes, a couple of things Steve and I talked about a week, a couple of weeks ago, some unanticipated costs that were not in our planning and our budget surrounding security systems and all, some retrofitting that needed to be done with the building. We also had a little change in staff. I'm obviously not Carly that was here last time. She's moved on to some other opportunities. So, we'd like to ask the commission if we could just table the decision right now. I know, I think we have 120 days upon which we'd have to make a.
Yeah, so there's, in the ordinance, there's the provision of if there's no progress on an application after it's been tabled or something like that, for, yeah, 120 days. That's come into play before where application is just timed out. So, there is that option available.
Well, Chris, it sounds like no point in having a public hearing tonight. Just sit tight and let you guys do some more thinking and you'll let us know.
That'd be great, yeah. I'm happy to talk to you as long as you'd want, but I think you'd rather me sit down.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, what do you think? Seems like probably makes sense to do just as requested. Anybody care to make a motion?
You're doing your investigations now on kind of what your options might be?
I'll make a motion. We table the item.
Yeah, we're looking at options for, for the location, and speaking with Church of
Support.
Do we need to specify if we have any time to bring it back, or will you and staff
the Living God may, I mean, they may have other options they want to move forward with
just keep it on our radar?
in the meantime that, you know, could cause us to have to pivot somewhere else and look
Yeah, we can. I'm thinking, since we did schedule and notice the public hearing for tonight, are
at another building. So, yeah, we're just in conversations to try to figure out what the next steps are.
we, if we're tabling and not actually doing the public hearing, if it did come back, we Yeah. It seemingly makes sense to kind of let them figure out. would either renotice it, or the option could just be hold the public hearing and then I do want to just also make clear though, so, there's the provision, like, we can table table it after that, if you would like to. it for a certain amount of time, but then to figure out, if you do go to another location, It's up to you if you want to request that, or the board if they want to follow that. that would be a completely new application, because we were noticing for this location, it's 300 feet within that. So, if you want to table for now and figure out if this is still an option for you, then But, yeah, your call no matter what you want to do.
It doesn't appear like they're ready, so why do we want to waste time on the public
if you do decide to go somewhere else, then we can figure out from that point.
hearing?
Yeah, I understand.
All right, yeah.
Start the process all over. I can calendar to touch back, touch base with you in 60 days if you'd like.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Sounds like we can take motion to just table it without a specific date to bring
I mean.
Yeah, just whenever you're ready to, yeah, and we can monitor that time as well, and
it back and refer to you to bring it back to us if and when they're ready to do that.
we can renotice the public hearing if it came to that. Yep.
So, just make sure you get with Steve and John and make sure you know the timeline.
Okay. Was there support to that motion to table?
Yep.
Molly, so, okay.
So, if he gives us, what, a 15-day notice?
Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, we have to put it in the paper within 15 days.
Motion carries. Good luck, Chris.
Thank you.
Next up is item 6B, which is Planning Department Report 2023-8, a review of the draft of findings
So, if you want to come back to us in March, you're going to have to get it to them before that timeframe. So, just make sure you're aware of the timing.
I appreciate that.
of fact for the Loving Neighbors Preschool Special Use Permit. Yeah, Steve going to?
Yeah, I'll cover this. Yeah, so you, we, this was introduced back in November. We had a public hearing last month and directed us to prepare a findings of fact for the special use permit for the preschool at 5444 Herkner Road, just south of North Long Lake Road. This is, no construction is planned. This is to operate a childcare center with an existing church building. So, as presented for you, our draft findings of fact for your consideration, about it met all the requirements of the zoning ordinance and the master plan.
Thanks, John. Commissioners, does anybody want to ask questions or comment about any of the proposed findings of fact, or does everybody concur with staff's draft that they're all met?
I think that's how most of us were thinking of it, okay. I'll make the motion that findings of fact for application SUP 2001-03-A as presented in Planning Department Report 2023-8 and being made a part of this motion be adopted.
Support. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And then there's a potential second motion that somebody could make.
I'll make the motion that application SUP 2001-03-A be approved subject to the following three conditions listed.
Support. Any further discussion on that motion? All right, then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries as well. Moving along to new. You're very welcome. Good luck. Hopefully you don't, you don't run into whatever the issues are that Chris's group ran into.
Yeah, I think your abilities will do it.
Good for you. All right, moving on to new business. Item 7A is a site plan review, actually Planning Department Report 2023-9. It's a site plan review for 1712 South Garfield Outlot. Who's going to take us through this one?
Let's start this off. So, this, just to orient yourselves, this is another portion of Cherryland Center, and it would be this portion just north of the Wendy's. It's currently part of the Curling Club, former Kmart, now Curling Club site. It would create an outlot out of this space, just north of the Wendy's. And it's proposed as a kind of multi-tenant commercial, some retail and restaurant space, one with a drive-through. There was some coverage in some local media on this. Also note, as planning commission knows, tenancy is separate from the specific use we're looking at in the application, and as we would analyze it as restaurant with drive-through, retail, restaurant, that type of thing. So, in terms of the site itself, there's a couple of things to comment on, and there's also some with the applicant here as well. There is, they have requested a partial waiver from landscaping specifically for some areas where there's utility easements, and I did double-check with the township engineer, and it's actually kind of typical language in the easement itself to not plant anything over that easement space. So, the way we looked at it as staff was just to basically subtract that length from what the buffer would be and calculate what it would be. They would still need a couple more, I think, evergreen trees, but seems a little more in line to kind of subtract that if planning commission wants to consider that. The other kind of big thing noticed in, as we've reviewed these at Cherryland Center, Cherryland Center shares driveways, shares parking, shares stormwater, and shares signage. We did note, applicant noted that signs are subject to sign permit, or signs are subject to sign permit review. Did note on one of the sheets that they show a proposed freestanding sign, and we want to make clear to them, and I would actually have them remove it from the site plan that is, it's not permitted to have its own freestanding sign. But otherwise, as I said, there's a lot of, would go under the agency reviews for everything as it, as it normally would. Otherwise, seems relatively straightforward as to what they're proposing, and as I said, someone from the applicant's here as well. So, look forward to the commissioner questions.
Should we ask somebody from the applicant then to come forward and fill us in on whatever you'd like to tell us at this point?
So, good evening, commission members. My name is Kevin Heffernan with Stonefield Engineering. We're the civil engineers on the project, and we are joined here with the applicant and project sponsor, Max Nathan of Traverse City Retail Management, LSE. So, following up Mr. Hannan's introduction review, we're proposing the development of a new 1.09 acre out parcel at the location that was just highlighted, within the Cherryland Shopping Center, front of Garfield Avenue right there. We're proposing a new 6,458 square foot commercial multi-tenant development with that end cap drive-through user on the south side. The site has been designed to sufficiently meet all parking, stacking, and circulation requirements per the ordinance. We're proposing 41 parking spaces where 40 are required and a maximum of 79 are permitted. We are proposing 14 stacking spaces, which meets the ordinance. One thing to note is the stacking is all contained on-site, far away from the shared access drive, so there would be, it was designed this way with the intent to try and minimize any off-site issues that might come up. I know that it's been a concern in the past, so we just wanted to nip that in the bud right from the beginning. And then the site is, you know, has been designed as well to meet all the lighting requirements. We're proposing four new light poles, a couple along the frontage, and then throughout the parking areas on the north side and south side, as well as three building-mounted lights. All, all lights are outfit with backlight shields where applicable to prevent any off-site glare to the frontage on Garfield Avenue. And the site has adequate access to all utilities and shows a net reduction in the paved area, kind of answering any stormwater concerns. As Mr. Hannan noted, it's all shared within the Cherryland Center overall development. The proposed landscaping plan, we're proposing about 21 trees, 22 shrubs to meet the township's landscaping requirements. As previously noted as well, there is that easement in that southeast corner benefiting the Wendy's site to the south. It is a landscaping and maintenance clear zone to maintain adequate views from the roadway. So, we tried to plant that frontage as much as possible. Our landscape architect on staff maximized the amount of plantings, the amount of trees up there without encroaching on that easement while trying to provide the adequate room necessary for proper growth of those plantings. So, we are requesting a waiver for that east buffer. And then the proposed building, I don't know if you guys have architectural plans in front of you of it. It is a 21-foot tall building, very similar to some of our other projects in the area, most notably within the Grand Traverse Shopping Mall, existing Starbucks with T-Mobile site if you can recollect over South Airport frontage. 21-foot building, the first 10 feet are modular block veneer, followed by the next 10 feet are ephist material with a black metal decorative coping. And that's kind of in line to similar outlot developments, muted natural colors, trying to stay in line with all the other developments within the area, trying to provide that welcoming look that you'll see throughout many of the applicant's projects in the area. And then you'll note as well, the trash enclosures, we have two of those on the north side. Those materials are very similar. They'll have the same exact colors, brick veneer with the metal decorative coping on the, on top. So, you know, with that, we're excited to be here again with you guys for another project, kind of adding one more puzzle piece to this Cherryland Plaza along the South Garfield Commercial Corridor here. So, we're here to field any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Commissioners, got some comments, questions?
All access to the site is internal, right? So, nothing, no curb cuts out of Garfield?
Yeah, has the same, keeps the same access to Cherryland as currently constructed.
So, any stacking issues that would develop with this, but they're all going to be internal to the site, and they aren't going to spill out onto Garfield Road, so.
The building would be about there, and stacking would kind of go around here and come. And there's 14 stacking spaces within that area.
And come.
Within the drive-through lane. If things were to, you know, get crazy, I think we'd be able to house about 24 stacking spaces before even encroaching onto the overall developments, shared access drive-in, maybe 35, 40 before it gets to the road. So, there's no concerns whatsoever there.
Okay.
When the Wendy's came in, it was because theirs was so much closer to Garfield, where there was some concern that it could stack and block the inner, the drive into the development. But this is obviously much, much cleaner than that, so.
I gather your proposed tenant there is the Starbucks. Do you have any data from Starbucks about what type of queuing they typically generate and?
I'm not exactly sure if it's Starbucks at this point.
Oh, it's not necessarily sure, okay.
Yeah, so, I can't, I know that we do have the other Starbucks over on South Airport Drive, so they would have all the data and information in regards to that point.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if any of the four tenants are nailed down yet.
Okay. Well, I realize that they don't have to be at this point, but I was thinking if you already had one, then it'd be interesting to know what their own data shows, because just anecdotally seems like Starbucks are very popular and they generate a lot of cars. I just haven't counted them, but.
Right.
Well, our own experience of just, you know, passing by that area, I've, so it's kind of a similar building, so that one that's in front of J.C. Penney there, it goes along where the, there's a, the pickup window and then to the back, and then does sometimes come around towards the front at like peak times, but that's about it. I do notice though that it does, it, there's people there all times of the day, so.
Kevin, you heard staff talking about with the sign, there won't be any pylon signs permitted. You understand that?
I should have touched on that as well. Yeah, if there's any signs, we're just going to take care of that under a separate permit. The idea was with the whole Cherryland Center, there was an existing sign there, so we would love to add a sign, but it wouldn't be a personal site sign. It would have to be a whole shared development sign.
Right.
And while those are still in talks, it's going to take a little while, so we had to basically locate where, where we located on our site plan is where it used to be. So, the intent would be to put a shared sign, but not as part of this application.
Got it. Glad you know that.
And that would be shared with, I think it's Walter Kraus, Wendy's, all the other tenants around.
Yeah, there's getting more tenants in this, or more owners in this whole Cherryland Center now.
I know you've talked to us about, I think it was only a month or two ago, like, anything more happening that we may need some more planning of the integrated whole? Is this the next thing coming, or is this not require a separate?
So, I kind of look at as these are newer, these outlots owners are kind of newer and smaller scale. Quite honestly, I'm waiting for the owner of the former Yonkers and Big Lots. That's the trigger there.
Okay.
Obviously, we've been talking with the Curling Center and with the Dr. Walls regarding the carting facility that he's building. But yeah, at that point, we'd like to update the shared access or see an update or revisit the shared access agreement, which also includes the stormwater and all of that, particularly as, and probably could address an opportunity there to maybe the various owners to come together and look at updating the signage, which is, the standards are a little bit different now than what it was actually built there, so there's some, actually some additional opportunity there for them. But that would be an opportunity for those owners to kind of revisit this, particularly since we're going to see some additional, potential, some additional changes here yet at the Cherryland Center. So, we want to make sure that it's working for the benefit of all of the owners in that, in that area.
Yeah, that's what I recall, but tonight's not the night we have to start focusing.
Right. I, I'm trying to get the three main, the larger owners together, so.
Okay. Would help me to get a little more clarification on the landscaping. I heard Steve suggesting that maybe the commission would waive landscaping and subtract 147 feet of the frontage as far as doing the calculating, but that they should comply with what would be ordinarily required under the ordinance for that length of.
Right.
Of land in that location minus 147 feet. But I haven't, I guess it's not clear what the applicant's response to that is.
Yeah, so, along the, it would be the east, so along the South Garfield frontage, the one that requires a type D buffer, that whole length is 227. The easements take up roughly 80 feet, so you're left with about 147, so roughly 150 feet. So, if you calculate out what like the type D for 150 feet is, in our letter, we provided just what that would be, what they currently are proposing, which they are closer to that, but still like a couple short.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to find out. Is the applicant agreeing with what you suggested, or are they, or are they not?
Yeah, did you see the portion of the review letter that we're talking about?
Yeah, so we're saying, you know, part of the easement, we're not allowed to put any plantings there.
Right.
We're saying we'd have to basically disregard that portion. We'd have 147 feet left, so we would just count the requirements on that portion.
Count it of 147, which would require, based on calculating this out, would be six large, five medium, small, and five evergreens. We're showing you have about five large, three medium, small, three existing small that are, we give you one-to-one, so you have essentially six small, and then one evergreen that's going to be saved, that's the bigger one, and so one to three. So, if you maybe upsize one of the medium, small to a large and a couple more evergreens, that should get you to what six, five, and five would be, and if planning commission is amenable to that, that's, that's what, that's what I think we were trying to put out there as just an option.
Okay, and we need to talk about that, but I was just trying to clarify exactly what it is.
That's what it was, yeah.
Okay.
Just one side note while we're talking about that.
Yep.
I know that the buffer requirement's pretty strict, they're pretty full on the frontage. Leave one, two, four, seven, eight, 10. We have 11 trees up along that frontage. We don't want to.
like a couple short.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to find out. Is the applicant agreeing with what you suggested, or are they, uh, or are they not?
Yeah, did you see the portion of the, uh, review letter, uh, that we're talking about?
Yeah, so we're saying, you know, part of the easement, we're not allowed to put any plantings there.
Right.
We're saying we'd have to basically disregard that portion. We'd have a hundred and forty-seven feet left, so we would just count the requirements on that portion.
Count it of a hundred and forty-seven, which would require, uh, based on calculating this out, would be six large, five medium, small, and five, uh, evergreens. Uh, we're showing you have, uh, about five large, three medium, small, three existing small, that are, we give you one-to-one, so you have essentially six small, uh, and then one evergreen that's gonna be saved, that's the bigger one, and so one to three. So, if you maybe upsize one of the medium, small to a large, and a couple more evergreens, that should get you to what six, five, and five would be, and if planning commission is amenable to that, um, that's, that's what, uh, that's what I think we were, uh, trying to put out there, is just an option.
Okay, and we need to talk about that, but I was just trying to clarify exactly what it is.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah.
Okay.
Just one side note, uh, while we're talking about that.
Yep.
Um, I know that the, the buffer requirement's pretty, uh, strict, they're pretty full on, uh, frontage.
Yeah.
Believe, uh, one, two, four, seven, eight, ten, we have eleven trees up along that frontage.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we don't wanna crowd, um, them so much, uh, that they would start kinda interfering with each other. I know that there's come some large trees.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, would there be, I can't speak for the landscape architect, I know that-
Right, right.
-he was trying to maximize the frontage-
Mm-hmm.
-while using some columnar trees to still provide some, uh, visibility from the road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm just wondering if there was any, uh, availability for discussion, uh, with those requirements as, uh, as we are proposing.
This is, this is the group to ask that.
Steve?
Yep?
I'm trying to understand exactly where it is that the easements are.
Um, so, on the site plan, they kinda listed, they showed, uh, or on the landscaping plan, excuse me, it's on a few different pages, but-
Now, let's look at landscape plan.
There's, uh, uh, the E is the electrical and the, uh, sand would be sanitary sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they show those, uh, you can kinda see where there's, uh, gaps in the trees. You can see the electrical going through, and then the sanitary on the kinda southeast corner.
Okay.
Yeah, if you have the plan, it's sheet C-eight.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And there's kind of that bare area in the southeast corner.
But I, I think what, what staff is saying, even if we take out the space where those easements are, you'd still be just a little bit light, and that's what we could talk about, um.
Aren't, aren't there two existing trees already inside that sanitary easement?
Uh, they're kind of more, those existing, they're like the really small ones, um, they're kind of on the edge of that, so, um, and that's kind of, as staff, we were thinking, there's still some room kind of on the edge of these, uh, for, uh, something that could be, something that could be utilized. You can rearrange this. We've seen some creative, uh, landscaping, uh, abilities to fit in a couple more things there, but, um, we just wanted to, uh, see if planning commission thought, uh, calculating it more at the shorter distance that they thought, if you thought that was reasonable, um, uh, or kinda what your thoughts are.
I guess I'm not, I'm still not seeing where this electrical line is that has an easement.
Uh, it's on the north side of the building.
Or than the north end of it.
Underground electric, overhead electric?
It just says E.
Yeah.
There's an area, it says area to be lawn, and then it, right below that, there's a box that says snow storage area, and then there's a, a line that runs southwest to northeast. It's got an E in it.
Ah, all right, see it finally. It'd be helpful if we saw the easements rather than just the lines for the utilities.
True.
I mean, my two cents is, uh, I don't have a problem if we have some easements that specifically say that there can't be certain kind of plantings.
Okay.
There can't be trees, shouldn't be trees. I don't think that necessarily extends always to shrubs or other small plantings. Um, so, I think that somebody, if we haven't already, we should look at the letter of the easement and, and specifically identify what can and can't be there, and then, uh, at the, in the strictest sense, the ordinance should be satisfied.
Mm-hmm.
And if there's an overlying condition where an easement says you can't put an oak tree there, or some kind of deep root tree, which is, in my mind, practical over top of a utility, then I don't think, unless there's some mitigating circumstance, that we should, um, relieve an applicant of the duty to provide that planting material on the site. If there's a mitigating cir- circumstances says you can't put it there, and on top of that, you can't meet the ordinance, then, then fine, but, um, if they take that same amount of material and, and move it elsewhere in the same frontage, then they, you know, we've, we've balanced it in the least impactful way to the requirements of the ordinance. So, I mean, I'd be satisfied if we had, if we had some kind of condition in the approval that the total amount of planning material is, is to be provided, uh, in compliance with the ordinance, and as required by any conditions of an easement.
Other folks got any thoughts on this?
I, I guess I, for one, would tend to agree with everything Chris just said, and Kevin, for your information, 'cause you're not here all the time. If there's a really good reason for us to do some waiving of the landscaping, we've been known to do it, but we don't like to do it, and there, there was a lot of work and science and other things that went into creating the landscaping ordinance, so, in this case, maybe because of your easement, we shrink your frontage for which the calculations are made, but, other than that, I don't think we wanna do any more wavering, but, and I'm just speaking for myself. Anybody else got comments or things they wanna say?
That sidewalk that's in front of Wendy's will continue on through this site?
Um, yes, and that was, uh, one other thing to note, so, most of it will be, uh, as depicted on the site plan, would be in the, uh, public right-of-way. There's a small portion on both ends that does go onto private property, so there would need to be, uh, it's like a, it's like an easement declaration, basically saying like people can walk on it as members of the public. Um, Wendy's, like, all of the ones around here did something similar. There's examples of it, if people need to see an example, but, uh, that would also be something that'd be required.
Yep, understood. Yeah, and that's just to tie it back into the existing sidewalk. Most of the sidewalk is right on the edge in the public right-of-way, so.
I'm starting to pick it out now on that.
No.
Uh, refresh my memory, when we did the Wendy's project, um, did the buffer requirements for Wendy's are the same classification as what we're looking for here? Is it pretty much the same?
It would be, um, 'cause, yeah, you'd have one frontage on, uh, major arterial, so that's the type D, and then everything else is commercial around it, so, and I think they were able to meet it. I know they kept some, they were able to retain, uh, some trees in the, uh, one of the corners, which I think gave them some credit, uh, which here, there was a handful of, uh, landscape credits. I don't know if there's any other large trees available to be saved, which could give you some credit, but-
I think in the north corner, there's kind of a landscaping bed with the larger evergreen, but.
Okay, is that the only one?
Uh, a few along the frontage.
Okay.
There's twenty-one credits.
Yeah.
Uh, we're receiving, so.
Twenty, wait, um, about for the whole site or for that frontage?
That might be for the whole site, sorry.
I think it sounded more like the whole site, otherwise we probably would, you have met it and not need to have this conversation, so, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Eighteen for the rest of the site and, uh, three for the frontage.
Yeah, okay. That sounded more correct, yeah.
Yep.
All right.
So, what's left to get that sidewalk going north on the other side of that entranceway? Is there two, are gonna be one or two more outlots on that side?
Um, the rest is, uh, still owned by Curling Center. I don't know what they have planned, although, uh, we did, when Curling Center came to us last year, we did kind of, uh, defer a couple things. I think we knew they were, uh, maybe interested in, uh, trying to create an outlot, but, uh, it was after a certain amount of time or some trigger, we'd have to double-check what that is, but they're also required to put in a sidewalk. Um, this potentially could've met that for them, so, uh, I think it's worth it for us to, uh, double-check that if that has been triggered, that they need to, uh, get going on their requirements as well.
Good idea.
In, if I just add that, in conversation with the Curling Center, the, the plan there was kind of looking at more of a, as a phased approach. They're only using, you know, a third of that building, uh, that fronts, uh, to Garfield, so the, the remaining, uh, two-thirds has to come back to you, uh, for them to use that. I don't anticipate them doing any, at least from my discussions with them, uh, any, uh, a further outlot in front of that building. Uh, they need that for parking. Uh, they are, they require a certain, a fair amount, I don't remember the exact amount, but it, so they'll require that, and they want, would like that at the front of their building. We did defer landscaping improvements and sidewalk improvements until the comes, but that site plan comes back for the, the remaining reuse of that, uh, former Kmart building. So, what they tentatively, if I recall right, is it does show a sidewalk, uh, along the, uh, Garfield there in front of the Curling Center, with one that would go into the interior, and I believe it was on the northerly, uh, drive there, that, that would come in so that you can access the Curling Center from the sidewalk. So, they kinda drafted that out as, but it wasn't something, something that was kind of deferred at this time.
Um, one last thing we haven't talked about yet, um, literally, I guess, is that the traffic engineer, it's at the bottom of page nine of the report.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it sounds like people aren't sweating the stacking situation here, but, uh, one of our standards is that it's gotta be found suitable by a registered engineer with an educational specialization in traffic engineering.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, didn't know if you'd received anything yet that satisfies you that we've gotten that I dotted and T-crossed.
Uh, we did receive the letter itself. It was Eric Williams, uh, that, uh, prepared it, um, uh, but like the way we've been kind of dotting the I is, uh, demonstrate said qualifications, um, uh-
And you haven't got it yet?
I, I have not got that piece of it yet, but this is what they prepared, and it showed also like the vehicle turning analysis was in there. Um, it was kind of similar to the one we did last year, was thirty-five sixty-six on North US thirty-one. It was one, one piece of the old Bill Marsh, um, where we also had like a vehicle turning analysis was part of it, 'cause it was kind of a similar setup where like three tenant, one drive-through space, but, um, I think that satisfies the intent of this.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem, but-
But we just need that too, yeah, we just need that piece of it to confirm.
We don't wanna get caught doing something without-
Yep.
-complying with all of our, our ordinance's triggered requirements.
We still need that piece of it.
You know what we're talking about, Kevin?
Yeah, we have no objection to it. Eric has his P.E. with, uh, focus in traffic, but he also did it with our traffic engineering department, so we'll get that sorted out.
Yep.
Okay, 'cause that's gonna be a condition of the-
Yep, that'll be part of the file, so, yep.
Okay, yep. Then we probably need to treat the wording, tweak the wording of that a little bit. The resume of the person who prepared the drive-through should be included.
Should be, shall be included?
Yes.
Yeah, shall is, you must do it.
And maybe showing that the person is a registered engineer with an educational specialization in traffic engineering, just like the ordinance requires.
Well.
Would it suffice to update that same document with his credentials, or would you want, uh, something further? Just to make sure we get, you get the right documents.
Um, I think, yeah, whatever demonstrates the qualifications, just either include with that, I think would be sufficient, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Commissioners got any other comments, thoughts, questions?
Just a, just a question.
Well.
Does the road commission, is, is the light that's not activated right now on the north side of that piece of property, or is it the one that comes out? I think it's the one on the north side of that, isn't it?
Say that again.
There's a, there's a light that's not activated. I, yeah, I think it's right there. Are they, are there plans to put that back into?
It's under the road commission's jurisdiction. Um, I don't know what their plans are for it. Um, from my understanding, it was operating more when the mall was fully operational. Now that there's more activity going on, I don't know what it's gonna take to trigger that back in, um, but it's, it's road commission's jurisdiction, so.
It'll make a difference on our traffic studies, though, if it, if that's something that's going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, I, if I recall right, it was functioning up until about twenty eighteen. That's right about when Kmart closed and Sears closed and all of that.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's when, it, it, it was still actually cycling through for a while, even though those were all closed, and at some point, it did just go to a blinking, uh, yellow. In talking with the road commission, I think they're probably gonna, at this point, be relatively hesitant to have that operating again unless, you know, warranted, uh, mainly because they're looking at flow going up and down Garfield. And, um, they'll, they'll, they said they'll monitor it and see if it is needed. I think at this point, uh, and we can keep them informed of as redevelopment of the Cherryland Center occurs, um, if, for instance, if there is a significant new use that comes in there, um, that we, we feel is warranted, that we could, uh, establish a, a traffic report to see if that would, uh, warrant having that signal. Uh, but at this point, we're just kinda deferring to the road commission.
I was through there today, and there was quite a bit of traffic on the interior. You know, I, I just pulled through and, um, it'd be nice if they do it.
It, it seems to me it might be wise for the township to at least send an FYI to the road commission, um, every time some more stuff is added into this property, 'cause I understand what you're saying, John, that a few years ago, when some of the big uses dropped off, the road commission decides that we don't need a light there, and I get it.
Mm-hmm.
But, if there's more uses coming back on, uh, I'd hate for something bad to happen, and then the road commission says, "Well, jeez, we didn't know there was stuff going on." So, I, I think they'd have a hard time ever making that kind of a claim if we've sent them an FYI that such and such is gonna be happening.
Yeah, I think we can demonstrate, uh, especially all of the new things that have been, uh, just in the last year or two. There's been a lot come to planning commission. Uh, I think we can demonstrate, uh, all the new activity. Um, and also, agency review is also part of, uh, all the site plan reviews. Typically, it's just permits, but I think we can ask them, uh, there's more and more activity going on here. Um, can you update us on the situation on the light at Garfield?
As long as they know. I, I'm not necessarily asking that they-
Right.
-do anything in particular, just-
Right.
It's a piece of information I think they should be provided with, and then what they do with it, they, they, that's up to them, but.
I would be curious, um, typically, the installation of a light would be predicated on, on applicant for development, doing a traffic study and demonstrating that there would be a certain, the level of service that we're used to seeing in traffic reports would drop below a certain point where nobody could enter, uh, or rather exit, make left turns, like, out of the, um, Cherryland Center. Um, what I don't know is, you know, given with the lower traffic of Cherryland over a period of time, they shut that light down, turned it to blinking, so I, I guess maybe one, the question to ask them is what would be the trigger for that light to be reactivated, and if it's a traffic study that shows that the level of service is not being satisfied, then who does the traffic study? Is the, is the county in their regular habit of updating their, their, you know, maybe with their signal timing or something? That might be the trigger. So, that might, I think that would probably get to your question, Molly, is what, what would the trigger be, and who's responsible for demonstrating the, the readiness for the light to be reactivated? So, they have required traffic impact reports and studies for new developments, though this is not necessarily a new development, it's a redevelopment, so it's not establishing new driveway or, you know, road configuration, you know, between the new use. Uh, so, it's a little bit different, uh, and I guess maybe that's the conversation we can have with them, is, is what do they anticipate? Uh, because I think, I don't know if they would necessarily require a traffic impact report for existing driveways, uh, in this case. Um, but, we do know that there could be some new uses established that could cause the need for that to be established. Uh, in the ordinance that the township has, it does provide some options there, and, uh, maybe if we can get some direction from the road commission in terms of what would be inappropriate. Uh, certainly, we have the, the threshold where i- if a new use creates X number of trips, uh, that, that study comes into play. I guess, you know, the question is, it's really not just that use, it's the collective center. Can we keep adding?
Yes.
I mean, effectively, we keep adding uses back into this site, so that, that trigger again is probably, you, you, you'll get the right answers, I'm sure. Well, and again, this get, kinda gets back to, it's, if I, once we can get the three larger property owners together, then we can kind of, these are some of the issues. It, and, and here's the thing, is I don't know if that light would still even be warranted in this day and age. I mean, I have the impression that that's been there for quite some time, so, uh, again, I don't know what the standards are with the road commission's at, but that's something that we will definitely have to investigate.
Maybe a topic on the twenty-eighth when we're sitting down with the road commission that we could-
That would be a good one.
Yeah, let's bring it up, yeah.
Good idea.
Meet with them in a month, let's bring it up and say, "Hey, you know, what would the, what would it take," or what's, what's their thought on it? They might say they wanna take it out, we don't know. Maybe give them a heads up and have them prepare something for that.
Is there anything else people wanna talk about on, on this one? How do you feel? Somebody wanna make a motion of some sort?
I'll make the motion, the application SPR twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two submitted by Traverse City Rental Management Five, or Six, I guess it is, LLC, to construct a multi-tenant retail and restaurant building, including a restaurant with a drive-through on a portion of parcel zero five. on a portion of parcel zero five dash zero one four dash zero four nine dash two zero. Be approved, subject to the following conditions, one through four, P D report.
Do you have some?
Twenty, twenty-three dash nine.
Support. Did you have some revised language for item three?
Um, yes. So, yeah, there's a few things to talk about here. Number three, the resume of the person who prepared the drive-through suitability report shall be included with the report, demonstrating their qualifications as a registered engineer with an educational specialization in traffic engineering that just ties it to that specific requirement. We also just, John reminded me as well, since this is a portion of this parcel, a land division, actually establishing this as a parcel, shall be required as well.
Do you have some language? You, do you want to take a minute to come up with some language? I guess that's another condition that needs to go in here, you're saying?
We can.
I mean, I think it's just helpful. I mean, they're going to have to divide the land off from theirs. It's, it's something that they'll have to go through the township assessor. I don't think it's a, I think it's helpful to have that in there. I think we did that with Wendy's as well.
So that would be a proposed new paragraph five or a new condition five?
Yeah, condition five.
What should it say?
Probably just a land division to establish the parcels shall be, shall be recorded, it shall be.
Approved and recorded.
Approved and recorded, yeah.
So are them two changes clear enough in the minutes? I mean, in the, will we get them off the?
Yeah, I'm writing them down. We'll get them to Anne for the minutes. And also, planning commission, how does the, do the commissioners feel about condition one? Does anyone want to amend or are they comfortable with the language that's in there?
You know, are we waiving? My point was, we, we continue to maintain the same amount of landscaping material. And I guess in rereading this, this actually waives the amount of landscaping material entirely where the easements are and. I guess to get back to my question, Steve, do we feel confident that the easements have been fully reviewed and there's an understanding of what can and can't be planted in the easement?
So I did not look at the specific easements for this, which we can, and I don't, if you have those, that would be helpful. And if you want us to require us to look at that in case there's specific language, does it say you cannot plant anything? Does it say you can not plant anything with deep roots, in which case you might be able to actually put some of the smaller right on top of the easement and then you can rearrange. Perhaps the language could just say something to the effect of.
How about this?
Yeah, you got something? Yeah.
The way.
Example, yeah.
The land, the location of landscaping may be revised to accommodate the conditions of any pre-existing utility easements.
Okay.
Otherwise, the landscape buffer must be set, requirements must be satisfied.
Okay. Which the full would be, for, the full length would be ten large, seven medium, small, seven evergreens.
And to the extent that they can be modified, one of those trees can go elsewhere on the site.
If it turns out that something is impractical according to the landscape architect when they're getting ready to do something, they could always come back and request us to modify this, couldn't they?
They could.
And maybe convince us, given whatever facts on the ground that might exist that we don't know about yet.
Yeah, it puts a barrier into, yeah, puts a barrier up. They have to come back, frankly, you know?
Well, I think, well, a couple of things. We need to ask the person that made the motion if these revisions are okay, but I'm not super clear that we've got what number one's got to say. I, I think Steve has, has told us what three and five will say.
And if, if ultimately, like, even under just regular language with the landscaping buffer, it can be placed wherever it fits on the language. Like if you, if planning commissioners don't want to waive any of the total, like it would probably worth it just to strike that entire condition. And then it will fit wherever it fits on the site, so. Because if you don't waive any of the material, you're not essentially granting a waiver, it's just where it can be located.
So you're saying we could delete condition one altogether?
If, if you do not want to grant a waiver, you could just delete that condition as well.
You okay with that, Chris?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like.
Because I don't know, we've never heard, I'm worried about putting a shrub on a sewer easement. You just take the shrub out when you got to repair the sewer. It's no big deal.
That could be as well. That could be as well.
I agree with you, Joel.
And then actually, the way the easements, in my experience, are usually written, they're exactly that way. And what we would require is that the landowner developer would have to put a tree back, otherwise they'd be not in compliance. Let the utility company's not taking responsibility for that tree. In some cases, they don't want roots.
Right, but these are sewers that are down, they should be deep enough and they're plastic and.
Agreed.
Yeah. One thing with the type D buffer, because I, yeah, putting a shrub, it's got like the shorter roots. Type D does not actually have any shrubs in the requirements. Type B does on the other dimensions, but type D does not.
If I might add, yeah, I was going to play to that point. The waivers are just for the mix of the small trees, the larger deciduous shade trees, and then the larger evergreen trees. And then the util, or the, sorry, not utility, the easement in play here is for a landscaping maintenance clear view area, not for the utility easement. So it actually benefits just the clear visibility to the Wendy's site to the south. So I believe in the easement, it's not about the roots, it's about the, the clear view triangle in that corner for the pass-by traffic.
So it's only as an.
Yeah, there, there is a water main easement, I'm sorry, but it's only for a portion of the landscaping greenbelt, the first ten feet of it. We are proposing trees in, right behind it, so the utility easement doesn't really come into play too much. It's the clear view.
Where does this clear view come from? Who created it, the clear view?
The clear view is for the cars pulling up to Garfield to turn left or right so they can see oncoming traffic.
Yeah, that'll be traveling southbound. It's a clear view so they can see the Wendy's site. It benefits their site, not ours.
Again, I get that too. I think we can rely on staff to make sure that the ordinance is met and any special underlying obligations that require planting to be moved around, I'm good with that.
So we're striking one and then we're using, the three got changed and five got added the way Steve indicated.
Five step four.
Well, yeah, now one is being deleted, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Actually, if I could suggest, I, I don't think I would strike number one, because if the site plan does not meet the ordinance right now as presented, they, it doesn't, it's not in conformance with the zoning ordinance. So I would suggest that you just reword that, that the site plan shall meet the landscaping requirements of the zoning ordinance. And then if there is an issue, like you said, could come back if needed, but if you just strike it, then I, while your condition, the waiver is not identified, you are essentially granting a waiver, because if the, if the site plan does not meet the ordinance requirements right now, that approved plan essentially becomes your waiver. So I'll just.
So what should the wording be?
I would just say the site plan shall meet the landscaping requirements of the zoning ordinance and work through that.
And then if it's discovered, if we actually get the easement language, would that affect, or we're just, they have to just figure out how to put all of the requirement on there somehow, some way?
Or if you need a waiver, it would.
They need to come back. They would need to come back.
I mean, other, unless you're, unless, I guess, unless the, how it is laid out on the plan right now is acceptable.
Which I think it's not, yeah.
It's light.
It is not.
So there's, so just because you, that site plan becomes the official record right there.
Yeah, good catch.
So I, it's, you could say if you want us to, subject to staff review, you could do that and that alleviate them having to come back here. And we could work that out, but that would be powering us to resolve that, so it's really kind of up to the.
So the site.
I like that idea.
Yeah, so the site plan shall meet the landscape requirements of the zoning ordinance, subject to the review.
Staff review.
Subject to staff review.
Okay, that's the new number one.
Okay.
So that would basically saying that we would be acting as, on your behalf to work with the applicant. So if there are any, that would allow us the ability to adjust that, should that be needed with, doesn't require them to come back.
All right. What was the language again? The site plan shall.
Meet the landscaping requirements of the zoning ordinance, subject to staff review.
Okay, perfect.
But I, I, I think we're trying to be clear too, that only modification that staff might grant as part of that review would be if you find out there's some things in the, in the easement language that requires you to do certain things. Otherwise, we're not doing any waivers.
Correct.
We understand.
Yep.
And again, Kevin, I'm just speaking for myself, but clear view waivers, they don't fly very well here.
Okay.
There's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of work went into creating that ordinance.
John, the, the clear view waiver is a waiver for vehicular driver view. So like when I'm going, I'm pulling up to the intersection, you have to keep a zone clear at the intersection. Those are really common and we're okay with those.
Well, I, I'm talking about when they're driving down the highway. They want, they want to have somebody see my business. That's not what we, that's not what we're.
Yeah. That's not, yeah, that's not what he's talking about, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Just making sure that so they can see the building. Yeah, we're not cool with those.
Yeah.
Okay. Is, is you, are you comfortable with the motion with all the tweaking that's been done? You guys think you got it straight?
Okay, do you, are, is planning commission straight with all of the, what's the language?
I think I am.
I think I am.
Okay.
Joe, you made the motion. Are you willing to modify the motion?
I'll modify the motion.
And who supported this one?
I supported, I modified the sport.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion?
Do you want it read one more time for clarity or you're good? Okay.
If you're good, I think we're good.
Okay.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And we'll have that updated document for the, as well as the easement idea for you.
Yep, we'll review it, but yeah, be prepared to update some landscaping, whoever did the landscaping on this, so. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next up is item seven B, Planning Department, report twenty twenty-three dash ten, proposed P U D minor amendment for the Chelsea Park West Apartments.
Yep.
You going to run us through this one, John?
Yes. So this is for Chelsea Park West Apartments. If you recall back in, I'm just going to, kind of back, give you some little timeline on this. So there was the original P U D that was done in two thousand and always anticipated kind of the, this area to be apartments in twenty nineteen. There was a, a change in the building type and that's where there was an increase up to, of, an increase of twenty apartments that resulted in a hundred and ninety-two apartments. Then there was a, in twenty twenty, there was a minor amendment, increased the number of carports and reconfigured the maintenance building and the dumpsters, basically consolidating to create like a dumpster recycling compact or area near the entrance. In twenty twenty-one, there was a mi, another minor amendment to expand Chelsea Park West. So the area where we have the, the final two buildings, which are under construction right now, was originally supposed to be four twelve-unit buildings and those, those were converted to basically what is being built right now that has two twenty-four unit buildings at the time with no carports. Then in, earlier this year, we did an administrative amendment for a swimming pool and fire pit at the clubhouse area, which the clubhouse is out kind of near the entryway there. I think it was initially going to be, when the clubhouse was proposed, to have a pool, but then it was removed. So administrative review, since it was a, in terms of area was minor enough, could be done administratively, that swimming pool was restored. Since that time, the applicant has been going through and building out the rest of the development pursuant to the plan, but we've had a lot of small changes to the plan. We've had the addition of carports, we've had some other items, the addition of some charging stations, some other amenities, including a raised bed garden. And then also there was, what we recognize is there is the emergency access, which is at kind of the north end of the site that goes out onto Hartman Road. And, and as that, this development was getting occupancy, residents were using that to access. Never intended to be a drive directly on the Hartman Road. So some of these things needed to be addressed. It's our feeling at that point is to have this revisited by the planning commission, because there was a lot of things added together that we thought warranted the review. For instance, also as well as when, in twenty twenty-one, when we did the minor amendment to Chelsea Park West, those two additional buildings weren't supposed to have carports, now they're having carports, which is all fine. But I think ultimately what we're trying to find is to have an established site plan set that reflects what was intended to be built. It seems like there's been a lot of changes that have happened on the fly. Totally understand that, but we're trying to document this, particularly when, when our zoning administrator comes and does a final certificate of occupancy and closes this project out, we want to make sure that they have a plan set that reflects actually what was approved essentially built. If they're out there and they're looking and they're, well, this wasn't here, this wasn't, this isn't on the site plan and so forth, it's hard to make a, a closeout. So we're anticipating that, doing this at this point, before moving forward with any other changes so that we are certain that we have a good record here, a site plan record for the project. What I'd like to do is just kind of review my comments. The, Bill Crane's here, engineer for Chelsea Park West, so he can speak about some things. But I just kind of want to talk about some of these issues and also give you some comments. And let me, before I start that, I just want to say on your desk, you'll, you see some eleven by seventeens. What those are is not necessarily new plans, it's a combination of, it's a complete plan set, so there's eleven sheets there. Half of them basically are already in your packet. And the other ones were ones that were previously approved, are previously approved, but no changes were made. So it's really just, one of the things that we really like to see is a complete packet, because when we look at projects and if there are kind of, you know, new sheets come in and we're, you know, wondering how it relates to other sheets, sometimes the new ones have changed things that conflict with what was previously done. So we're trying to ultimately have a complete record and so that's why we, we like to have the complete set. So that's what that is on your desk.
This is the complete set now?
Correct.
The one that's dated twelve twenty-seven twenty-two?
Correct.
Okay, good.
And again, you know, nothing, there, there may have been some minor changes to that based on some of my comments in the report, but by and large, those are pretty much the same plan sheets. So in, in going through my comments that are in my report, the, the parking and the carports. So one of the things we just were, we know that there are still some additional carports that have, have yet to be installed. Steve and I were on the site back on December first. Steve was there, did a site visit yesterday. So based on our information and what we've witnessed there and, you know, saw is that, yeah, there's still some additional installation of those carports to be in. And those are mostly related to the, where the new buildings are located, buildings nine and ten. So in looking at the plan sheets and what actually was constructed is a, there's, it's off in places. There are some areas where the plans are showing some like landscaped islands where there's actually parking spaces. So that's something that we want to make sure that, that is consistent. So Steve, if you could just zoom into, just the one area I just saw is the Essex Court, kind of up towards the front, of course, Hartman.
Is that the new ones or up closer?
The very first part, yeah. If you could just kind of zoom into that.
Okay.
So this is just an example and, and I just wanted to kind of point this out is, when you look at that plan sheet, so if you look at. So this is just an example and, and I just wanted to kinda point this out is when you look at that plan sheet, so if you look at that image that's on the screen along with.
C one?
C three. So this is where I'm just trying to rectify some of these things. So you'll see, for instance, along building two there, we got like a landscape island that was never installed. I don't think there's any issues with this. It's just something that we need to be a little bit more consistent on in terms of the plan sheets. So same thing with the building, building one.
About the one next to the carport, right around the corner.
Right. So right, that, I, I don't wanna get into all of it, but that's just kind of an example.
But I mean, I mean, if we're dealing with, if you're having to deal with a, an amendment to a PUD, what's shown on the plan that this group approved should be what you guys constructed out in the field. And if you didn't construct what's on this plan, that pisses me off. And, and now we're wasting our time looking at a PUD and you didn't even build what you were supposed to build to begin with. We're, I'm, I'm sorry, we're looking at an amendment and you're asking this body to, you, you didn't do what you were supposed to do to begin with. It upsets me. Upsets me that your time's getting wasted. It upsets me that our time's getting wasted. And it upsets me that this project keeps coming back all the time with all kinds of different revisions. So anyways, sorry, I'll shut up.
So as going through this, I use that as an illustration. Like I said, we're trying to get this rectified. It, it's important particularly when, in, when it comes to project closeout and our zoning administrator does his site visits. So that's one of the items. Moving on, my comments, the dumpsters, that's been, that was already been addressed. I'm just identifying that for, for the information for the planning commission to be aware of. Walking path that was been changed, that's, that's acceptable. Car charging stations, raised bed garden, bike racks, those have now been identified. So those items are, are done. The swimming pool and gas fire put, I just acknowledge in the administrative amendment done last year. That's just, again, for your information. The emergency gate, that is what is being proposed. That's something new. That is at the north end there. So if you were to look at, a, a good one would be sheet C two. And that shows, kind of up near, there's a dog park to the, kind of the, the west end there. You'll see at the end, there's a, a red line there, emergency access gate. I don't, I went through our files. I don't ever recall that being reviewed by Metro Fire. Just wanna make sure that it, the specs for that meet Metro Fire's requirements, Knox Box requirements, all that type of stuff for the lock. And, and everything like that. So, and that, that should address, I think from our feeling, should address the issue of residents traveling out to Hartman. I did suggest that one thing that might be done too is to maybe put signage out on Hartman that say this is not an entrance. That's on, technically it's not on their property. That's on Butch Broad's property there. That's where he's got his maintenance building. That could alert people that they're no longer allowed to enter there, but my guess is most people would figure that out after some time that there is a, a gate there. But that will address that particular issue in terms of traffic going out on the Hartman at that location, because it, that is kind of a dangerous stretch there. It's a very busy intersection at thirty-one and Hartman. You got that curve right there and it's a short distance and then you got another curve. And people that are comfortable, they're driving pretty quick through that area and turning movements is not necessarily very easy. So on that one, we'd like to see something from Metro Fire. If it's been already reviewed by them, we'd like to have that for our records. And then just kind of those two areas, I call area one and area two. Area one are these unpaved areas that, there's one of them in kind of area one and that's the one I kinda down along Hartman that, from my understanding and what I've looked at some aerial images, it's been there for a long time, but it is, a good portion of it is on the property for the, for Chelsea Park West. It has been used for storage, for containers, tractor trailers have been stored there. And it's a, it's a dangerous area for people. It's not intended to be a turnaround. They are proposing some trees in there. I'd ask them to consult with the road commission just to make sure, you know, I don't know if there's, maybe should be some birmingham along there, if there is. You know, if, if there's something like that would probably help, because sometimes trees, you know, don't always take and if they die off and then all of a sudden we're, you know, so certainly grass planting, maybe there needs to be birmingham if there is. My only concern there is that, ensure that there's proper roadside drainage, so we don't have any puddling or anything like that that could impact the roadway. So that's the reason why I suggest contacting the road commission. The other area is kind of that emergency access drive at the north end. And I know there is some container storage there from the contractors and the applicant has indicated to me that they are going to be removing those, but that's an area too. I, I granted that's not on their property. I'm not necessarily asking them to plant anything in that particular area, but certainly remove those items that's not intended to be a, a storage area. Couple of the last items, the parking space striping. So there was areas where some of the carports went in and obviously when the striping for the parking lots was done, doesn't necessarily match up. We've seen that. They are working through that process right now. I don't think they've completed that yet, but they are going through and they're blacking out the stripes that are kind of in the middle of spaces and resolving where they are, so that they're correctly, where you can have, you know, basically two cars in between where there's the, the pillars for the, the carport space or the carport roof. So that's something that is, work is being resolved. Also, we did get photometric plans for, for, there's actually two plan sheets. Have reviewed those and those are acceptable and meet our requirements. And then the, we did, as you got on your desk, is at least the full plan set. One thing I did notice is if there are gonna be changes made to the site plan to address the issues related to the parking and the parking spaces and the carports, the landscaping as well, plan does need to be updated as well. So that should work, coincide with that. Finally, there's one other issue. And if you look, I refer you to. Probably the best sheet to look on this is C dash two. So there's a, what was initially approved along, if you look at like building ten there, that's one of the new buildings. It's the northerly building. Building ten there has on the east side, so the side facing that open space has a wood chip pathway. That actually, it has been installed, but it's been installed actually on the Chelsea Park Two property. So where it shows that it's within there, it's actually probably about ten, maybe fifteen feet farther to the east. So it still serves the purpose. It, if, well, I guess our concern is that if this is going to be part of Chelsea Park, who's gonna ultimately be responsible for this is our concern. So if it is going to be Chelsea Park West's responsibility, then we need to have, there needs to be an easement in place and that they will be responsible for maintaining that. If this is now going to be part of Chelsea Park Two and that's the condominium association, I don't know if that's actually been transferred to their ownership or not. I believe Butch Broad still owns that parcel yet. It will now be his responsibility to maintain that. That's fine. At the bigger scheme of things, this is all part of the same PUD. So it, it, these amenities are ultimately benefiting the residents of that. We just wanna make sure that one, it's corrected on the plan and two, that it's just documented where it's going to be. So that's the last item that I have in terms of comments.
So what do we need to do?
I'm, at this point, I, what I have recommended is to table the item until these outstanding items that were just reviewed are addressed.
Are, are you satisfied with, is this a cursory walkthrough or, I mean, I'm, I'm disturbed by the fact that there are whole islands on this project of landscaping that aren't even there. Do we have any certainty of any other aspects of this project having been built according to the plans? Or what other deficiencies are out there hiding? Should we be even reviewing a minor amendment when there are potential other deficiencies in the work that's already been performed? That's number one. Number two, I don't understand what, I mean, there are so many deficiencies you've just relayed to me. I can't remember the last time where we had an application come before us with so many deficiencies that usually they don't make it this far. So I, I don't really understand why we're even looking at this.
Well, you're suggesting that those things get cleared up before we look at this next move. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, some of these things are consistency with what the approved plan was. Some of these are, a couple of new items. I did mention those, but it's, it's a, it's a bit of a mix.
But before we look at this amendment that they're asking us to look at, you're gonna clear up whatever these deficiencies are?
Correct. That's why I'm suggesting that it be tabled.
Should we hear from Bill on behalf of the applicant to see what his thoughts are about all this? Bill, do you wanna?
You've heard a lot. Bill Crane, Crane Engineering, I'm here representing Chelsea Park West and J.B. Donaldson. Our submittal was for a minor amendment to kinda, just kinda clarify a lot of the loose ends, access points, trail points, the offspurs of some of the parking areas. We, we got this, I guess the staff report, like the first to la, or end of last week. So we had a couple of days to kinda figure out what we wanted to do. I did meet with John today and went through a lot of the things. I mean, I can go through those if you want me to, what, to kinda respond to some of the John's items and comments that he raised questions about. The pathway on the east side, I spoke to Butch Broad today after I met with John, because that was a question I didn't know about. So we, I did speak with Butch Broad on behalf of Chelsea Park Two. They were aware that that path was on their side. They would be willing to do an easement if we need to and the responsibility would be part of Chelsea Park number two. I, I think it sounded like when I was, spoke to him, he was aware that that path was in that location, but we can always get a document from them for Chelsea Park Two to cover that issue about the pathway on the east, east side. The other items was the dry, or the, the parking space along Hartman Road. We did have a conversation with the road commission. They would like to see a, a ditch line along Hartman Road and then our plannings would be on the backside of the ditch line to kind of create more of a, a road to pretty much eliminate that possibility for future parking along that location, but we would, we would follow their standards and place the ditch line along there and then the, the plannings would be on the backside of that to meet that concern and question. And I guess a lot of the other stuff that John was speaking about, the amenities, the striping under the carports, that was on, John pretty much stated, once the parking lot went in, parking lot was striped, then they came back and put the carports in and they might've been a little off from the striping, so they are in the process of finalizing the re-striping underneath the carports. And I guess with some of the spots that are inconsistent with the aero photo to the site plan, we could make those corrections and make sure, we'll do another walkthrough, even if it's with the township, just to clarify exact what we may have missed on the site plan in those few spots. But I mean, that, that, we can take care of that and work with John and Steve to make sure that those are correct, field the plan. Also, I know I did, we did have a conversation with Kathy Fordice at Metro a long ti, I think that was with part of that last minor amendment about the emergency access. And as part of her approval, that would require a emergency gate on that north stub that goes from the parking lot out to Hartman Road. So we would be installing that emergency gate per Metro Fire review and standard tonight. I'm pretty sure we've got a letter from her, if not, we'll get one from her to clarify the, the parking lot, emergency fire gate in that north, north parking area. And then we did submit just a, a, not a complete set, but a, a set more or less kinda changed, seeing what was changed. So the amendment that you got tonight was actually given to John yesterday or today, combining all those plans into one plan set. So you have a, a full set, but we will coordinate with John and Steve in regards to clarifying that that plan does meet what's actually in the field. So we can, we can make that happen.
Are you okay then, Bill, with the idea of tabling this until those i's are dotted and t's are crossed and the paperwork is up to snuff with the, and then staff can just present it to us as a minor amendment?
I mean, we've preferred to, to get that as a condition, but that's because, I mean, we're kinda getting close to that final portion of getting that last building closed out so we can get our final occupancy, but if that, I mean, if we can work with staff to make that, make those plans finished, that's fine. That's a determination of the board.
If we table it, that just means that we're not taking affirmative action tonight, but it can be brought back as soon as staff tells us they've gotten everything that they're looking for and are prepared to present things to us again. What do you think, commissioners?
Well.
Molly?
Okay. You, you have this dozen or so items that you want addressed and you have them in writing and they have them in writing and they've acknowledged that they need to be addressed. So when those little things are checked off and we have documentation, because that's gonna be the issue is fifty years down the road, when Butch is not there anymore, how do we, we don't want somebody coming back and saying, well, you know, who's got this and who's got that and all that. So, you know, if you guys can do that, that's fine with me. I, I think we should table it until you've got those issues worked out. Everybody acknowledges what they're gonna be and how they're gonna be fixed. That's just my.
I do, I'd like to see for the minor amendment, the actual things that are amended to help me find them on this drawing. I'd like to see the things that are being amended clouded. Could you do cloud them for us?
I mean, I got them listed right here on the bottom of the page, but we can, but I can, I can cloud them absolutely.
Thank you.
So staff sort of anticipated that this may get tabled and as a draft motion. Anybody care to make that or if we wanna do something different?
Motion, application SBR two thousand dash zero nine dash M be tabled to allow the applicant to address the outstanding items as identified in P D report twenty twenty-three dash ten.
Support. Any further discussion on that? Is that clear enough for you, Bill? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. So we're meeting every couple of weeks, so as soon as you guys are.
Something that could be taken up at a staff or the study session or no?
Well, staff will probably.
It all depends on.
Talk to you about that. If it's a quickie, yeah. If it's not, then no.
Okay.
Let's get it complete first.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It might be helpful if we walk the site a little bit too, just to double check stuff.
Yep.
That would be good. Okay.
I'll give you a call. We'll set up a time.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
I got one more question for him. Is this charging station going to be open to the public or is it going to be, is it going to be something that's, and how are you gonna regulate that?
Hello, Jack Glover from J.B. Donaldson. Primarily, I would like to address two issues, one being the striping, which was resolved yesterday. Those have been blacked out and re-stripped in accordance with the carports. So that is reflective on the plan, as well as the emergency exit. As well as the emergency exit per fire department, that gate is on order. That is a traditional three-bar gate with reflective markings, as well as a Knox box in compliance with all regulations. In terms of carport, I'm sorry, car chargers, those will not be open to the public as it is on the private property. Those are primarily reserved for residents of the development. And per se, if somebody from the public were to come in and just sit in the car, it's not necessarily a designated waiting area, you know, in regulations with that development and, and the zoning per regula, number of chargers per electric vehicles within that development.
Any other questions before we move along? All right, thanks, guys. We'll see you when you and staff are ready to get back together with us.
All right.
Thanks. The next item on the agenda is Item 7C, Planning Department Report 2023-6, a conceptual review for Olson Foundation Development. Who's going to kick this one off? John?
I'll start. We've, this is kind of a opportunity to look at an area of the township which is, is undeveloped at this time, but has the opportunity to really be transformed into a significant development area. And so we're looking at the Olson Foundation parcel that is at the southern end of the township. It's basically bound, it's the land that's west of US 31, north of Rennie School Road, south of Meadow Lane. When we look at our zoning map, you'll see it. Zoning map, there's a, a big red square along with a, a rectangle, I should say, or thereabouts, and then a, a long strip of multifamily that's orange, R3. So it's general commercial and, and multifamily to the edge of it, kind of a budding to the, to the west edge of the property. So at this time, we've had some ongoing conversations with Olson Foundation, Brad Olson, and they're looking to develop this. They've, they've developed, there's been some developing that's occurred at the front of the property, more retail, commercial, that type of thing. Certainly, they've made some improvements along there in terms of service drive and so forth, with the anticipation that there'll be additional development along that corridor. But the likelihood, most retail commercial needs visibility and easy access. So that's why it tends to front on some of our busier corridors. When you get into an interior of a site, the likelihood of having general commercial, which is primarily retail-type space, to flourish on an interior parcel of that size is probably not likely, other than if you were to build something like a Grand Traverse Mall, or perhaps something on the scale of the crossings where you have more interior road systems. So in, in our conversations with them, they've had some ideas, and we've asked them to kind of start putting together more of a, of a plan for that area. So for this conceptual review, they presented their ideas, and I guess at this point, we'll hear from them.
Bill Crane, Crane Engineering, along with Brad Olson from the Olsons Foundation. So what we've kind of presented tonight is kind of an overall, I guess, master plan for roughly about 150 acres in size. It consists of some multifamily, similar to what's currently zoned there now. Right now, it actually runs the full length of the west side of the property, but we're looking at keeping some multifamily residential kind of in the northeast portion, and then kind of through the center going to kind of an industrial use, either an IG or an LG combination through the center, and then keeping the commercial corridor along Rennie School Road and along US 31. The, I guess the intent of the project would be to kind of put a main public road that runs from Rennie School Road, right where Stadium Drive comes out on the south side of Rennie School Road, try, tie right into that court location, and then continue all the way up to Meadow Lane. Currently, there's an existing private drive that comes from 31, partway in, right just south of Action Water Sports. So we'd kind of tie into that same private drive over to our new service drive, and then a small little ring road on the inside, possibly public, possibly private. We're kind of in, in coordinations with the road commission right now to kind of see what they're, what they would accept, what they wouldn't accept, kind of. But this is kind of our first go-around on it, just to kind of get an idea from your perspective as a township, what you would like to see, what you may see different, if this is kind of the direction that we want to go. But it's kind of our, our first blush at kind of doing a, a mixed use in this area to kind of find, follow the existing zoning that's out there, which is kind of the commercial general and high density. But we all know that kind of the industrial parks are either getting filled up or just not around, and, I mean, there is some need for those smaller industrial units, kind of like a Hammond, Hammond Commerce Center, Hammond Industrial Center that has a smaller lot, but allows for kind of a Sherwin-Williams, or even a welding shop, or a mechanic, or that kind of stuff, that doesn't really need a lot of space, but fits this location and corridor along 31 and Rennie School Road. That's kind of an overall feel, and I'll have Brad speak too.
Yeah, it's Brad Olson with the Olson Foundation. The actual height or multifamily, it's same equal amount of acreage. We just moved it to position it for, to work with the property and stuff like that. This, majority of this is all wooded, just for an FYI. All the lots and stuff is very manipulative. Somebody wants four acres, and we can pull three or four acres together and re-manipulate it to work with that property owner. We're, we're open to it. Again, this is conceptual. The next point I want to make out is I've been working, having a lot of chats with Warren Call, correct name?
Yes, correct.
With T-S Connect. He's been doing studies and bringing in people and seeing what the demand is through the communities and working with the township, correct? And he has pretty much, almost to a T, identically set up the exact same map that we have, not even knowing what we were doing. I sent him this, and he, and he sent me his, and they almost fit like a glove. Give you that. His point was, he wanted to bring this in and shrink this up a little bit, and I explained to him, you know, we want, I wanted to keep some acreage right here for a bigger type of store. Majority of those guys want 20 acres. If right now that's a full 32 acres, and I just keep everything, again, flexible. It depends on the demand of everything. If you guys know that area, I think that hole right there in the corners, Rennie School Road and 31 is going to be challenging because it is a very deep hole. To just development and taking care of that situation. We already got the development here, and obviously right up 500 feet going in, and that's brought up to specs, DOT specs, if I remember correctly. And that was just built recently, the past few months. So trying to do this in phases, what I've, as a foundation, I've got 10 people on the board. I've got them to do Phase One, the commercial frontage, give us seed money, working with the township, trying to be able to finagle and create a concept, conceptual drawing. I personally have not brought it even to my board, full board. About four or five of us have been working on this. This has been worked on for half of my life, and I've been watching it half my life, and it's my goal to make it happen for the best of everybody. Board, your board, the township. Any questions? Give me a shout.
Sure. Commissioners?
It's a big piece. It's a big piece.
I might add, I might add some, build off some of the comments there made by Brad. He mentioned Warren Call and Traverse Connect. So Garfield Township has an agreement with Traverse Connect to help with economic development. One thing that we noticed is a lot of our industrial parks are either kind of filled up or are filling up quickly. Primarily, the one that we have seen a lot of activity most recently is the Hammond Commerce Center there at the end of the Franger Road. That's starting to fill in quite a bit. And that's, those types of smaller lots that have water sewer and, and reasonable access out to the, to the road network are, are what we see a lot of demand for. Again, not needing the retail exposure, but needing a place to get the full services. And so as, one of the things that we asked Traverse Connect to do is kind of do a industrial space study in terms of identifying what the demand is, you know, as these places are, are no longer available. One of the things that we're, we noticed in a place like the Hammond Commerce Center is we're getting some really kind of non-typical industrial type of uses. For instance, the Curling Center, you know, initially wanted to go into the Hammond Commerce Center. Our ordinance permits that, it provides a good variety, but some of the times we, you know, we want to make sure that our businesses that are out there that need space to either do some light manufacturing or whatever, have those spaces available to them. So it seems like when we look at the, at the zoning map and the future land use map for Garfield Township, seems like this would be a good opportunity to maybe evaluate this, to see if there could be some kind of business park, industrial type of park development at this location. I think for a couple of things that we have interest in is, one is, is how does this actually get rezoned? So we don't typically carve out, I mean, we do have some parcels that are split zone, but by and large, zoning follows parcel boundaries. So right now, we have this large parcel, so how do you go about doing the zoning? And that would probably, would have, if this were to go forward, would have to happen as parcels are being created. So they, this kind of overall zoning plan is really important. But in doing a rezoning, we have to follow our master plan. Now, our master plan looks at this as, at the future land use designation, very similar to the, the zoning. It shows a large area that's commercial, and then this kind of stripped to the back as multifamily. So, but there are, when we're going through a rezoning, there are standards that recognize if conditions have changed, if the area has changed, that it could warrant that rezoning. In other words, it's, it's, if this were to be rezoned, we could see, okay, you could rezone those areas for, for, to general commercial, or, they're actually already zoned general commercial, but the area that's for multifamily, larger than where it's at. The industrial areas would not be so easy, because that's not really anticipated in the plan. However, if conditions were to change, that would warrant that, why that could potentially happen. In other words, probably a, a change example would be extension of a hip, or that Stadium Drive that comes out onto Rennie School, which is a public, it's a county road, if that were to be extended all the way up to Meadow Lane. Now you've created a, a significant access area in terms of really getting to the back end of this property. That could justify the rezoning of it, so that you are still understanding that you are kind of meeting some of the standards that we look at in the, in the zoning ordinance for zoning changes, that how does it conform to the master plan? In this particular case, it might not conform to the map designation, but it could conform to standards, for instance, of the master plan speaks of providing areas for industrial development and that type of thing, as well as these conditions that have changed. One slight thing in the map that you're looking at, it does mention an area in, as IL, I, we would probably be reluctant to have areas, we would zone IL. Limited industrial is really our harder, heavier industrial. I think it'd be more appropriate, I, I think in talking with Brad and his team, I think the IG would probably fit a lot of their needs. It, it kind of works more in tandem to, again, if you can imagine, the Hammond Commerce Center is a good example of that. Does work good with these other uses, whether it's the commercial or the multifamily. But certainly, that connection, that access point, as well as the one that goes east and west, that connects 31 to kind of this north-south access, are significant pieces. And as I mentioned in our report, there could also be the opportunity of maybe even providing some pedestrian connections. So certainly, this connection to Stadium Drive at Blair Township there, has you opportunity to kind of take a back way down to, more towards Chum's Corner in the, maybe if I wish, show that in the aerial.
Which section, sorry?
Just kind of zoom out a little bit, so you can see the relationship to Chum's Corner, down towards the baseball park.
Yeah, here's Chums is down here.
Yeah.
Ballpark, and here's this site is about here.
Yeah, so you, potentially, if you had that, you could also provide, you know, people that are living in Meadow Lane could potentially get to the ballpark, could get to some of the, the stores and other retail outlets that are down towards Chum's Corner with this kind of north-south connection. And then just a couple other items, just want to mention as food for thought, is utilities are certainly what create a value here along with the access. Anytime you create access to property, it, it creates value. The other is, and this is, I think, where the industrial, the IG fits really well, is to have water and sewer service. So that's essential to this being successful, allowing for density, allowing the types of uses to be there, is much greater when you have that water and sewers available. I know that the Township Board has had discussions about this a little bit. They, Jennifer Graham from Gordy Frazier has, has presented some information to the board and to Olson Foundation on options for water and sewer services in this area. The sewer is there, the, the water needs to be provided, so there's, that needs to be figured out. I would, you know, suggest that any discussions related to that be worked with their Township engineer to ensure that it, it fits in with the system in the best way possible, as well as serving that area. And then the final opportunity there is to look at stormwater management. So we require that stormwater be managed on each site of development. When you have some type of a plan like this, it does allow for some of those stormwater locations to be consolidated. So instead of, if you see all those different units that are there, instead of all of them having their own little retention basin or whatever, there's the, there's the opportunity, if it's designed right, to connect a lot of those together through stormwater, through a stormwater system that could have some consolidated basins in certain areas. That gives the opportunity to have better use of the land, more productive, but certainly, again, has to be well thought out and well planned, because it's, it's, it's predicated on, you're, you're building kind of layers. The uses are one layers, the other layers are the street network, the other one is the utilities, the other one is the stormwater system. And so how those are all laid out to, ultimately together, make a lot of sense. So that's just kind of our, our comments, and maybe some additional thoughts for you. So, that's just kind of our, our comments and maybe some additional thoughts for you.
The, a couple of questions. On, on your, on your drawings, you know, there's some of these bigger parcels. You've got names associated with them. Camping World and Sunset Rentals. Are those deals that are in place? They're ready to come in?
They're all sold.
Okay, so they're?
They've all been sold and we have one future lot that's
Okay, okay.
So then the drawings, the drawings misleading because it's indicating that part of this rezone is some of those, it's confusing.
Well, I just, I just saw, you know, there's the other big, then there's the forty acre, a big forty acre industrial piece with no name associated with it. And obviously must be a specific use in mind there because you wouldn't carve out forty acres of one piece without a use in mind, but with no name associated with it. I just didn't know that those pieces were already sold. And I guess for staff, the only thing I would say, I, I don't have any problem with what they're proposing. I think it's probably a good use for it, but I think that as we approach the comprehensive land use plan for this area, we need to go back to thirty thousand feet and look at this whole area. Now, you've got, you know, you've got commercial and industrial backed up to agricultural. And, and it's, it's a postage stamp. And I know there's still active agricultural in there, okay? And you're talking to, to, to people very familiar with it, but is that realistically agricultural? It's surrounded on all sides by at least medium density residential, if not high density residential in industrial and commercial. So, I think we need to look at this quadrant and say, what is, what's going to happen ten, twenty years down the road here? It's not going to be farm. It's not going to be agricultural. And I know we've protected a lot of our agricultural land, but I think we really need to look at, it's almost surrounded in there anymore. So, and I won't get any too deep because I obviously have interest in that area as well.
I think you're on the right track, yeah.
So, I just, you know, if you, you talk about buffers, you've got agricultural and an industrial in high density. I think we just need to, and that's on our agenda this year, to look at the master plan. So, it's, it's a good time to, to look at that. As far as this development goes, I don't, I don't, I think you guys are smart businessmen, okay? You're not going to build and develop something that's not needed and have some demand for it. So, I think that it's, uh, it's probably, you know, a, a pretty good transition, so.
Yeah, the master plan will be on our, be updating this year. And as part of that, as we started looking at it last year, we talked about studying either like neighborhoods or nodes, corridors. This is certainly one that there's kind of a lot of factors to look at as to what the future is going to be. There's potentially provision of new utilities that haven't been available before, which would change it. New access points that haven't been there. So, this one's definitely a worthy like neighborhood study area.
Right, that's all I would say. So, look at the whole area and, you know, interconnectivity. You know, this development might create access to properties that wasn't there before.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Is there any plan in, interconnecting any of that road to the properties to the west? And on, for future development, like we have in subdivisions? And then, and also is there that county road that's going to possibly run through there from Stadium Drive all the way up to Meadow Lane? Can that, as long as Meadow Lane and Rennie School, can we get to the county to make them an all-season road? So, it's going to benefit that industrial park in the frost law season? Who has a say in that? So, I mean, obviously we don't want an industrial park that we can't use two months out of the year.
So, the
Yeah, that's a good point, Joe.
Yeah, so if you recall Oakley for Meadow Valley, so when you connected two subdivisions there, which were consisting of public roads, the road commission will accept it if there meets their standards. So, in this case, when you're connect, you're connecting Rennie School, which is a public road and Meadow Lane Drive is a public road, that if they make that connection between the two and they meet the requirements, standards of the road commission, then the road commission has to accept it. Now, it, to meet all-season standards, I guess that would be ultimately up to the developer on that. I mean, if they meet the, the minimum requirements, road commission will accept it.
Right, we just need a way to make sure the road commission
But yeah, if you're looking for all-season requirements, which, which I think make a lot of sense, it creates greater value for the, those industrial type of properties. But that, I guess, would be ultimately up to what, with the road commission.
It would be a definite, I guess we'd want to try to get it that way. But then it's a couple of other things. On Blair's project that they're working on right now, that dirt hill there, or that dirt area that's, well, Almers has been doing the work there, but it's right, it'd be right south of the forty acre parcel that is industrial. Yes, so how close are them apartments going to be to the road and that they already have planned? That this industrial piece, which is the forty acre piece with that, I just wondered how close that's going to be to each other? Is there buildings?
I mean, it's, I mean, I imagine their standards are probably similar to ours in terms of setbacks and so forth. I, you know, that, that's the, I was thinking in terms of the IG is, is something that does have standards that I think probably mesh fairly well with the R three. Particularly in this case, you got a county road between them. I mean, if you look to, on here to the north, you got abutting the properties. There are also in our industrial, if you look at our industrial zoning, it typically doesn't have front yard parking. It's usually on the side or to the rear. So, if you go into a place like Hammond Commerce Center, you know, everything is, is offset. So, typically it's trying to create a, a more attractive front to these, you know, industrial parks and that type of thing. So, that could, would also probably apply in this particular case. So, it creates a, a good transition between the two. I did want to follow up though, that's one thing we didn't really talk, but is worth to investigate is a connection to the west of, you know, at the larger parcel to the north there. You mentioned about that. In the case of like the Burmley Hills that we just went through, that was a requirement in, for the site condominium. So, if you're, if you have a site condominium that's abutting a unplatted or undivided, you know, another site condo, then they do have to provide that stub. In this case, I don't see that necessarily happening, but that doesn't mean it couldn't provide some type of a stub to the west.
Well, the more important would probably be the utilities getting stubbed to the west. And probably a couple of different spaces is such a long area. But then what, in the meantime, what would the setbacks be along that west line for both the, the multifamily and that industrial that's, that's touching that west line?
I'll have to look that up in a second. I don't know off the top of my head, but.
Would change that multifamily a few years ago and we, we relaxed it some, I think, but I don't know if the agriculture fifty foot would?
So, and if we were to look at that, let's use that forty acre parcel there that says unit one. If you were to orientate that to Rennie School, that would be actually considered a side yard. And that would be fifteen feet, but let me check because there are additional standards. Sometimes there are depending on the use.
Let's check landscaping for that too.
It could also be oriented the other way too, this.
To the new public road.
Well, how close on that west line is what I was concerned about. Along that, um, that's it'd be that farm that's closest to the Rennie School road.
So, it could be, if it was a side yard, in other words, if the property is orientated where the front faces Rennie School, it would be a side yard of fifteen feet. If it's oriented towards that new north-south road, we'll call Stadium Drive Extension, that would be a rear and that'd be a twenty-foot setback.
So, that's still, it'd be no further than twenty feet away.
And I'm not, just a quick scan of this, the additional standards that are placed in the IG. I'm not seeing anything about when it's abutting. Sometimes when we're, you have these types of developments that when they're abutting, for instance, like Cherryland Center, it's in the planned shopping center. When it abuts, non-commercial areas like residential, they have to have like a fifty-foot buffer. I don't, I'm not seeing anything there with that, but that's, the other one you mentioned was the R three. The R three has a setback. In this case, most likely, everything is kind of orientating off of that Stadium Drive Extension. So, that would be a rear site, rear setback of thirty-five feet. So, a little bit more.
So, they were, their parking lot would, well, if their building was back there, it would be thirty-five feet. Or if their parking lot was in the back, it would be thirty-five feet.
Correct.
It's not, it's thirty-five for residential, only fifteen to twenty for industrial. It seems a little kind of, kind of backwards.
Especially when it's going against the same type of land.
Yeah, yeah, it seems odd, so.
John, you talked about one of the attractions of doing this as a whole is, is the integrated stormwater management possibilities. Instead of everybody keeping their water on their own site, would that suggest looking at this as a PUD?
You could do that, but I don't think you're necessarily required to do it. I mean, I think it, I would, when I look, when I think of the stormwater, I don't think of it all being connected. I think of some, you'd have some districts connected in there. So, for instance, mostly likely the unit one and unit two would probably be separate unto themselves for their own stormwater management. If you look at the, for instance, that south east corner there with the thirty-two acres, that's all identified as general commercial, that potentially could all be one. Those units where there's kind of like a horseshoe road there, those could be potentially all connected. And then maybe farther north where the, you have the outlet on the, the road that's going out onto thirty-one, that could potentially be another area. So, that's just an illustration of creating more of like, maybe having four or five districts in there. The reason I mentioned it in the kind of that pattern is because I could see where, once you put that road through there, north-south road, you could kind of subdivide those areas out and maybe create those as site condominiums. For instance, like where that horseshoe road is, that could be all done as one site condominium. You would have multi, you know, multiple units in there. That kind of is its own kind of entity unto itself right there. Obviously, a lot of this also depends on topography and, and that type of thing. So, but that's just kind of using it as, as an example of how you might be able to consolidate some of those.
But where that forty acres, the forty is, there's a huge hole right there. That would benefit the whole south half of that farm for a retention basin and would that, but could you take, in the past, we had different zoning districts. We couldn't use one zoning district as a retention pond for another. Could you do this in this case since it was, take the red or the thirty-two acres? And, well, they have a hole up there too, but if, can we jump uses? And have one retention pond here for possibly maybe the R three and industrial? And like it weren't, the Fox Motors that time, we had to rezone something just so we could get them a retention pond. That, the BMW place, for instance, where I remember that.
Right, right. No, I recall because I know there's a portion in our ordinance. I think that's in the ag district, isn't it?
I was looking it up, yeah.
We have that.
Kind of ag, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Also, in this, it would maybe take care of itself. You could
Yeah, I, uh,
But none of this piece is ag. It's actually, that is
Yeah, so I'm not sure.
So, you would inter, you could enter, if they wanted to have the retention pond down here where that big hole is, they could, they could run the water from the R three.
I don't know what that would preclude that from, happening from a zoning standpoint.
Some sort of easement in place.
Yeah, there would have to be easement for ownership and maintenance of it and so forth, but yeah.
If you condominiumize the ownership, then everyone has a stake in it. Would be another way to do it potentially. But that, some, in some fashion, it should be, we can double check, we can double check any of that, but yeah.
I don't know when I can speak and when I can't, but I'll just kind of interrupt here.
Go for it.
We've already kind of done stuff like this, like when Action Water Sports, they wanted extra property in the frontage. And they wanted the lot next door and I, and we already had a retention pond there. And we wanted to direct that east-west road here. And I said, I, I, I want, I'm going to put that road in. Hey, let's, let's increase that retention pond so it works for that road and that drainage easement and for the north-south ingress, egress road here. I already have spots back here where I know there's low-line areas, working with those. Let's do natural spots for the retentions and drainage basins and stuff like that. Same with this area that's kind of spoke before, I do not know. But so far, I look at big pictures. I don't look at, let's sell this lot. I'm looking at, let's sell this property. I want to work for everybody. I've, I, I'm a person that does it as you go and look at the natural amenities, look at the terrain, work with the engineers and walk the place. Let's figure this out and put, for exactly what you said, make those little associations with the horseshoe. Yeah, that was actually already kind of in my mindset. If there's a natural feature on the property, I'm already going to go for it for natural drainage and carve it out. Again, this is conceptual. I'm hoping for the best, maximize yield, square footage of the property for our benefit. I mean, I still, like I said, I have to bring this to a board too. I'm making, trying to make it for the best of both worlds and I have a lot of conservatives on my board. It, it's going to be, you know, I'm working with every, all you guys, but I'm telling you that I am one hundred percent into natural features and making this logical area based on the terrain, the area. And I'm getting, it's, luck has fallen on me. Nobody else here, zero.
What are you doing? You should want to dig any rates.
I started it and I'm going to finish it, yeah, with you guys. Whoever, I have to. Yeah.
Jim, are you part of this development?
Yes, yes.
So, part of it, do I need to?
There's a microphone that needs to hear who you are.
Hey, I'm Jim Schmucker and thirty-three forty-seven South Airport Road, and I'm working with the team with this.
Can you stay by the mic so that it'll get recorded?
Okay, from experience, get all this stuff, I've seen all this in the past. At Chum's Corners, all the, I put together a deal there. I had twenty-one easements on, in the, the whole hallway was full of easements. And we have all the businesses on Chum's Corners, including Shell Gas Station, Ace Hardware, Prevo's Market, Burger King. We put that whole thing together for all the drainage easements and they're all running into the pond back in the corner. So, it's already been done, this type of thing. So, I've seen it and it works. And knock on wood, for twenty years, there hasn't been one phone call. And all attorneys were involved and they okayed everything. So, it's all very logical and very, it was common sense. I remembered with the owners walking out there and all agreeing to this kind of thing. So, anyway, that's, you're all on the right track on that. The other thing, I just want to make a quick addition. When we say light industrial, I think I'd like to qualify that just slightly. A lot of this is wholesale businesses and distributions. It's not, not manufacturing. And if it is manufacturing, we have a place, one of the businesses in Hammond Industrial, it's cleaner than my living room. I mean, it's immaculate because they have all these refined equipment, very quiet noise, there's no noise. And so, it's, it's just so you don't get a misnomer of the type of uses. And giving the example, we're, we're running out of property in the type of businesses that are in Chum's Village, which is right adjacent to this, more or less, of this whole project. Pepsi is like about four acre parcel. And then there's a new Great Lakes Chips is another three, four acre parcel. And Buffy Bolling, or, or basically was Wixels Buffing, Bodding and so forth. They just opened up and they have a seventy thousand square feet and they took ten acres. So, we're seeing massive needs for bigger parcels. And right now in Chum's Village, which we've been doing the marketing on that for years, we have one four acre, one parcel, four point four acres, and maybe three, maybe four other lots left. And that's all that's left in that whole park. And so, the demand is here for And so the demand is here for this kind of use. I, I look at it more as a business park, that's my terminology, it's just, because I look at it in that fashion. So I just want to add that to it, as far as the, you're also looking at this, you want to know that there's a need. And I could, and also in Hammond Industrial, yeah, that's right, we're marketing that too. There's nothing left in the back area, the area, the only lots we have available are on Hammond Road itself. So I don't have a lot in the back to, to sell whatsoever. So again, and there's no zoning over there that you can expand in that area. This is a logical area, you know, what we see happening for this, these kind of uses. Thank you.
So we, uh, we're, we're getting a lot of details. As I'm recalling, this is a conceptual review, so we don't want to get too much into the weeds, I don't think at this point. But what do folks think of the ultimate concept that is being floated? Chris?
I mean, in, in concept, I'm excited about what you're presenting to us. I, I think that taking a comprehensive look at, at all your land holdings and working through a rezone process, or some means to, I'm not, I'm not sure that the rezone, I'm not necessarily sold on the rezone, but working through some means to create a multiple, a broader, broader set of uses for this large piece of property is great. I'm, I'm excited that you've been invested in this for a long time and are interested in, you know, bringing it through to fruition. I'm curious, I, I mean, what I've never dealt with, and I can't claim to have infinite amount of experience, but a rezone that's, that's this big is, is kind of foreign to me. And, and also what the, because I, I, I think I'm more used to seeing something this big have a, the intent, have a much more comprehensive plan. And, and when you say, you said a little while ago, doing it as we go, based on what makes sense and what's logical. And I get that, but when I look at, you know, what, what we're doing on behalf of the township, to, to, to make sure that things are planned, and, and you're asking us to let you plan this, but the, the part that's, do it as we go, I get a little anxious about when it's such a large piece of property. Because if we make some decisions over here, and then we wait till we get over there, then the decisions we made over here aren't conducive with what the decisions were that we made over here. So, you know, that's where I have a lot of anxiety. I'm, I'm, I'd be, I'm really excited to see this go to the next step. I'm not sure what the next step looks like, but I think that it ought to have a lot of, like, if we're, if we're looking at this, right? I'm seeing this as one, uh, large residential development perhaps, maybe you are too.
There we are.
And then, oh, so that, you know, if this is what we're gonna rezone, and we're gonna, we're gonna actually make this a zone, I'm to the point where it's like, gosh, I want to see how that residential development's gonna fit in there so that we don't find, uh, five years down the road, that this is somehow inefficient for residential development. Do you follow me? It, I'm.
In, in a way, and that's why I'm trying to work with John and these guys. And taking these, you kind of categorize them, and Warren Call. Because I mean, I've been speaking to him about weekly, and trying to categorize and say, where's our demand come from? Is it light industrial? Are they gonna go in the center? And just trying to identify certain areas within the properties. And so we can start bringing that conceptual down to a more narrow spot to bring back and understand it. But from what we've seen, this is the areas where we gotta start drawing it in. This is a gimme, to me, this is a gimme, because this is getting spoken for, it really can't elaborate on that. But if this is frontage, it's gonna, you know, obviously be probably retail. You don't put anything but retail, sales retail in the front roadways. Obviously, and I'm just being, I mean, common sense. That's a big lot, you're at four corners, it's gonna be a big retail, something big, like Blaine's, or a big, I don't know, truck stop with the gas station. These were gimmies, because it's retail, and it's a, but when you take out all that, this is only forty-nine acres. Break that down, that's forty acres, and there's seven acres here. I think we're missing a little bit of acreage. I don't know if this forty-nine includes that.
Actually, I added up, for what it's worth, I added up the numbers on here, and it's a hundred and eighty-eight acres, which is inconsistent with what's on the letter that says a hundred and fifty acres. So that's, it's not, it's neither here nor there, but.
Well, yeah, after we sold these, it's about approximately a hundred and eighty-nine acres, and if you start pulling this off. So it, it depends on where, where you're talking about, at what stage, what's sold and what has not. So even I, I get checked on that once in a while, going, where are we at? So, you know.
John, does a.
But overall, we're at a hundred and fifty acres right now with the.
That's what's left, that's what you haven't sold?
Yeah.
Okay. John, does a, and, and I hear everything you're saying, and I'm, I, part of what I'm concerned about too is the progressive nature of your development, and let's say it takes you ten or fifteen years to build out what you've got designated as general industrial. Well, what if ten years from now, the general industrial zoning doesn't apply? I mean, I'm, I'm curious if a PUD actually, I would, I would want you to have the greatest amount of flexibility.
I'm hoping for the greatest.
And, but, but, but here's the thing, if we, if we zone it this, you gotta come back and rezone it ten years from now, if you want to do something else. And, and I don't know if a PUD might have some more, i- i- you know, flexibility opportunities. I, I'm just interested to explore all the different options to, to see how you might, you know, do this process. And I want you to have the most flexibility.
So the, the PUD is, is an option, certainly that could be done. I think it does require a, a, a large vision of how this would kind of all work together. I think we were kind of looking at, not necessarily going down that path, but it could be done. For instance, like, the, the west side, the, the two large parcels there, in, in our mind, could be phase one, where you have a, that north-south road really becomes almost like a phase one piece. I think that almost has to occur so that you can, before you do, I mean, that, that gets you into the interior of the property. And it, it does identify, it gives you areas to, that are already identified for some major improvements. So the, the IG to the south and to the multifamily to the north. And then from there, you could conceivably then do additional phases to where you can go with that. And I guess that, that's, there, there's some challenges with PUD that we've been running into recently, where you, particularly if they're done in phases. If you have a master developer come in and do a project, it's a lot easier than when you have multiple developers for a PUD. PUD works great if you're the, the sole developer, and you're going in and you're doing this and this. And that actually develops at a reasonable phasing process, so that people understand when. I think one thing we noticed recently, as we're getting the build-out of these remaining PUDs, it's been a bit of a challenge. We're getting constantly people coming in and, you know, I don't like those people over there walking on our roads, because it's, they've never had anybody over there, but that's always been the plan. So it's those kind of inconsistencies in the phasing that can become a bit of a challenge. Now, it, it's not to say that PUD doesn't make sense, it's just that sometimes it's, it, it does create great flexibility. From a phasing standpoint, can be a bit of a challenge to it as well, particularly when there's a lot of unknowns in this. I think PUD works, in my mind, it's a, a comprehensive plan to a site. It makes, uh, while it does give you that flexibility in terms of the uses and so forth, there usually has to be some sense of detail to what is actually anticipated to that. So that's why I, I, why the rezoning process is a little bit challenging in terms of phasing, I think it's imperative to understand what potentially those phases would be. So for instance, I would see phase one, doing that north-south road with the rezoning of the properties to the west side. Then I would think extending out to thirty-one on that east-west road, you know, connecting that, and that allows for that to build on going behind that CG stuff that's been developed on the frontage, and now you are going more into the interior.
So, to that end, I mean, what, I guess what starts to concern me a little bit is understanding what, what, what would drive the net, I mean, because what we rezone, right, is driven by this network of roads. And when you have this road come in, you know, okay, that makes sense, and, but then it jogs this way, and then it jogs back that way. I start to ask, well, is that, what is driving in the planning for this? For a road to go this way, then jog this way, and jog back that way? And is it just to subdivide in a certain way, to end up with a certain number of acres? Or is it because this parcel shape is best for the, the zoning that we're gonna grant for it? Or, or, and I look at some of the kind of oddly shaped trapezoids in here, and it's like, well, are, are those parcels best shaped? So to that end, you know, I'd like to see something that helps me understand what we're rezoning and why, since we're not likely to have a, an overall comprehensive plan for this development in the form of a PUD or something else, then I just want to understand why, you know, in, in, when you bring a full submiddle, why you would want to, why would you desire to lay out these roads in this way?
If I could, it, the exact words for it is, because I walked it. And I have a, a very potential buyer for this portion, and this is all wood, it's beautiful woods. I'm not going to, I'm not gonna carve into it, I know that's gonna be for residential. So my common sense said, let's carve this out to make sure all of it's all, instead of the long, I think it was long and narrow, yeah, long and narrow residential. Like, I talked to these guys, I said, can I chop that up as long as same amount of acreage? So we could savor all those woods? He goes, yep. And then when I got a potential sale of this, they really endured this parcel, so, but they wanted forty acres. Well, okay, if I get forty acres and I'm selling this property, I know I want twenty acres on this corner for a big acre store or something in the future. That gives me a little bit of flexibility for either small lots or large lots. That brings you all the way, all the way up to this point. So I figured we'll maximize and bring all the lots for, I don't, I don't know your exact wordage, but for end, light industrial or whatever outside, you know, keep a barrier between multifamily and those guys out there. That's exactly where that road came from, is just walking it and just showing, with obvious.
And I don't question your ju, your judgment, and you're familiar with the property, I'm just suggesting.
The concept of that case.
I think we're just gonna need, uh, you know, that translated into documentation to, you know, help support it. It's, it's not really gonna look like a straight rezone, it's gonna look like something with, a rezone with some other documentations to support why it's being rezoned this way. Does that, you, you understand what I'm saying, John?
The tricky part is the parcels aren't there yet. Right now, it is one big parcel, the road's not there yet.
And then the tricky part is, you're not, you're not planning out necessarily what that residential looks like, but if the lay of land says that that's the way it's supposed to be, it's just gonna, it's gonna be big, and this is gonna be interesting.
I, I think the, probably the most important piece in this concept is that north-south road. So you can imagine, like, let's say that none of this is planned, but you build that north-south road. It's the same thing of, you know, kind of when I think of, you look at Lefrane, or particularly the south end of Lefrane Road, when just a few years ago, there was just nothing there, but there was a road going straight down the middle. It's that access, and that these then become, at, at a hundred and ninety, when this was originally, and now it's been dropped a little bit, at a hundred and ninety acres is, is a big piece. There's a dead area in the center of it for most of the development that we deal with. Unless you have like a big General Motors plant coming in there or something, or whatever, the ability to develop that is not feasible. The access then becomes, creates this more manageable, and, and from, from kind of like a spine of sort that goes right through it, then comes the ability to parcel off. Like they're saying, none of these parcels are there, you're dealing with this kind of large, about a hundred and fifty acre piece. Now, you put that roadway kind of right through the middle, so to speak, they're going north-south, that provides access. Now that can splinter off a little bit more in manageable pieces. When you're dealing, I mean, probably forty acres is probably large for most of this, but obviously, there's, there's an interested party in that, so that, that does consume that. But most of these would probably be as well smaller ones if you didn't have that one large. Same thing with the multifamily, thirty-eight acres for multifamily, that's a lot of housing units.
And I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing what Brad's saying is that, that, that layout of that road is gonna be driven by the topography, uh, and, and how this part, large parcel's gonna be developed. And I'm just, I guess what I'm coming to is that, you know, as part of this discussion, the, you know, I don't think we'd usually expect to see a, a topography plan for a rezone. But if the topography is driving the layout of the road, is driving how these, uh, this, this land division should occur. For example, I think you said that the, um, the residential is thirty-eight point two acres, roughly equal to what's there. If the topography says that, you know, this road needs to be a certain way, and the residential should get bigger or smaller, then, you know, that should just be part of the evidentiary record that's driving how we're looking at rezoning this. It's, it's, it's making sense to me, but it's gonna be a different kind of rezone than I think we're accustomed to, maybe.
Molly?
Yeah, just, I'm just looking at this, and it looks to me like an attempt at spot, spot zone over here, spot zone over there, spot zone over there. So I'm agreeing that we need a better way that's more flexible for the developer to move ahead. And I'm just wondering, outside the box, if we should establish a new classification, that's a business park classification or something else, that would have, these uses can be there, and they can be anywhere on there. You know, they, they can be anywhere on that spot. Instead of, okay, well, what if we decide that unit seven down here shouldn't be general commercial anymore, but maybe it's going to be industrial? Or maybe it's going to be some other thing that's not there? Do we have to go back in and rezone that? Is there a better way for us to look at the big picture on it that makes it easy for them to do the development?
Yeah, I, I think probably, um, this is where, as they're going through this process, would be really important to develop a phasing plan first, that would anticipate how this would be done in phases and where those types of, you know, uses would be. I think, um, I'm not, I'm not really too concerned about how this laid out. You're really only dealing with three different districts. The, the multifamily, the IG essentially, and the CG. If that road comes in through the middle of it, and you've already kind of identified as potential development for the west side, the east side is the one where you want probably the greater flexibility. And that could be done in, in a more phased process, smaller phases. You know, I would say the west side would be one phase, and then the rest of it would be smaller phases. I think it could be adjusted as it, as it would go. You wouldn't, I, I would leave it as it's currently zoned, and then as those parcels are kind of created in segments. For instance, like that fifty acres looks almost like one site condominium. And that would make sense to develop at that time. I, I think it would be imperative on them to develop that phasing, phasing plan. Flexibility is important, but to a point, I mean. Flexibility is important, but to a point, I mean, the, the IG district is extremely flexible and I think it's important. What we would be looking at these rezonings is not what they're intended to have, what they want to build there. What we're looking at is the zoning districts. So if we zone to IG, everything in, you know, Section three twenty-three of our ordinance is permitted either by right or by special conditions or by special use permit, regardless of what they're ultimately doing. I think that's our difference and when we look at this as a little bit, same thing with the CG, we're looking at all the commercial, general commercial uses that are permitted in that district. They might have their visions on, you know, maybe certain, you know, potential tenants or people buying those properties, but our look at it from a zoning standpoint would be all those permitted uses. But I think the phasing plan is, is really important, how those phases then are implemented could be adjusted as they go through, but it, I, I think initially it's important to lay that out.
So we're going to need, and this is pretty detailed. You've got forty-nine point six acres down the center, that's light industrial, but somebody might come in and want twenty acres of that or, you know, ten acres of that or something else. Do they have to come back then for each, or is this what we're going to go by? This is the map and you're going to do it like this?
So I would do it in phases. I would not rezone all of this as is what it looks like. First of all, there's, the parcels don't exist. What I would do is build the access for it and probably focus on the west side of that access road. In the meantime, what can be done is that, you know, one of the things that we could look at as well in terms of, the timing of this is fairly good with our master plan process as well, because then we can look at some of the future designations of this to maybe adjust for something that allows for greater flexibility in this particular area. Instead of identifying it clearly as commercial or industrial or multifamily, could have more of a mixed use kind of classification. We've already talked about that internally in our, in the office. That could be the designation, so it gives it some flexibility in terms of what districts go where. When they actually phase this into, let's say now talking about the east side, they can look at that and see how they want to, one, subdivide that and could be done in a way that should follow some type of a larger plan, but they should have, they have to have at some point some certainty of what, how they want to subdivide that based on some type of phase.
Well, doing it in phases though, and rezoning per phase, it could take some time. This board could be completely different in five years and they won't have any assurance that they can rezone the way that we think they can rezone.
Right.
So, you know, that's kind of chancy if you're a developer and...
So, so I have to say, that is one of the, the shortfalls of going through strictly as a zoning, because we don't, there isn't a mechanism to like adopt a zoning plan. But I will say that's where the, the master plan becomes a really important tool in terms of giving, if the, if the master plan is identifying some, more of this as a mixed use development, which is what this really is, and kind of, we, we talked about this being kind of a subarea that we kind of put some attention to it. The standards that are in the master plan that talk about it, similar to when we looked at Marlowe Garfield in Cherryland, talking about, we really see that as a mixed use. There could be residential in there, a lot more than, you know, just a commercial shopping center and mixing that up. Those types of standards, if we had in the master plan, help to guide those, ability to make those decisions for futures rezonings in the future. That's probably the best thing to have outside of some type of a zoning plan, which I don't know what, what mechanism that would be, or doing a PUD. Essentially, a PUD is a customized zoning ordinance for a site.
And then we would just, you know, we would amend the PUD over time, right? That would, instead of rezoning sequentially, that's what gets odd and complicated to me. I, I think you're raising a really great point, Molly.
Yeah, I don't know which is, be a better way to go either, but if, if in the master plan, we could designate these things the way that they're designated.
I think, so the, the challenge, I'll be honest with you, the challenge that we face with the, the PUD process is, this is our, this is our zoning ordinance in Garfield Township, but this is not how we regulate land. You've got to add in every single PUD that we have.
Yeah.
So that's why we like kind of pairing it back to, to zoning districts and, you know, making kind of conventional, you know, lay it out in the master plan and then rezone it as you need. What we can do, and this starts with the master plan, is to identify kind of some more mixed use approaches. So we can, particularly in maybe these subareas, so you do put some standards in there in terms of the types of uses, the configuration of, of the layout of those uses, the different amenities, utilities, that type of thing. And then, once we're getting with the master plan, that just gets us back to where we're going to go through and start amending the ordinance so that we create districts or adjust our districts that, that advance those types of concepts. So if we were to look at this as not so much, right now, we're looking at this as a zoning change, really we shouldn't be even looking at that in that terms. Zoning is the tool to get us there. How we should really be viewing this is the uses and what's that layout of the uses that we want to see happen there. Then the tools, whether it's zoning or PUD or whatever, could be applied. Initially, when we were talking about this, we weren't at that point of even starting going through, when we had some initial conversations with Brad and his team, we weren't even starting the, the master plan process. I think if we go, the timing of this was working out pretty good. If we go through this and we kind of have that conversation, not just for this area, but for all of Section thirty-two or whatever it is, and we start saying, okay, how do we adjust the plan to put the standards in there to kind of create the vision that they're looking to do and if that's a vision that the township wants to see as well, looking at it from more of a land use pattern, then the applications of the districts will become easier, particularly if we maybe adjust those districts so they kind of fit those types, that type of vision. But that's, that's, I think, the hard part. If you look at this strictly as zoning, it's, it's a, it's a challenge and maybe is a little too constrained at this point.
I think, I think Molly has a good point, but if it wasn't already zoned primarily commercial, it would be more worrisome. But it's, it's already almost all commercial, so rezoning from, if you, if you, if you shift the residential up, keeping the acreage the same, whether it's zoned commercial or industrial, I don't think is, it's, it's not like you're going from, you know, you're not going from, from agricultural or parkland to industrial, you're not, it's not that controversial. So I don't know that that's an issue, but he, he mentioned a couple of times, he's got a hot buyer on forty acres, so how quickly will you be coming back and asking for rezoning on that forty acres? Because I don't think your buyer's going to buy it if it's not zoned industrial. So the first move is going to have to be to rezone that forty acres, I'm assuming, which would then probably create the shift of the residential up. So, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but we can phase it all we want, but Phase One will be the west side of that property if that's, you know, its frontage is all gone except for that corner. You've sold everything on the front except for that twenty or thirty-two acres. So, you know, at what point will we, will we be seeing, because at the point you come in and ask for the rezoning on the forty acres to industrial or create that forty acre industrial piece and you, at the same time, I'm assuming, shift the thirty-two, thirty-eight point two into, into residential, we're going to want to see this road. We're going to, we're going to have to see the final plan on this road that then becomes in stone. That's now part of the plan. So, and I know how, I'm assuming that's going to happen pretty quickly, I would think.
Already get to estimates.
Was that on?
Already get to estimates on it.
Yeah.
On the road?
Okay. Okay, so, you know, so that's, that's great. I mean, that's, because that's what, I mean, I, and I'm just thinking through the process because that seems to be, that forty seems to be driving this, or part of it. So the forty, turning the thirty-eight point two into, into residential here creates the need for that road to be finalized. So, once that all happens, I think the rest of it will probably, the dominos will start to fall and it'll probably start falling into place. But that's just me thinking out loud, so.
And, and that gives us, that's something that we could do now based on the current plan. So if you look at our master plan, that does not envision IG in that location. So we, we would, but yet, what that roadway does is it changes conditions enough where it is now anticipated that we, there could be the incorporation of, of other uses. So that's what I was saying. If we were to just look at that forty right now in accordance with our future land use plan, I would be very reluctant to allow for that to go forward because, in itself, because it really is, is not conformed to our master plan. Now, if we start, now if you're talking that one plus the thirty-eight acres and that roadway, that's significant. Now, that does anticipate that there is change happening here, obviously a new public roadway. That gives us, we can utilize other standards in the rezoning process to say, okay, the conditions are changing. We know that what access does ultimately pushes for additional development demand in an area. So that does give us the, I guess, the justification there, the ability to make that rezoning happen. So that's, I totally agree what you're saying, Joe.
Absolutely.
What is it zoned south into Blair Township?
Commercial manufacturing.
Thank you.
In that apartment complex is a special use within that commercial manufacturing. The first that Joe was talking about, that's all, I guess, a three hundred unit residential development, but it's a special use in the commercial manufacturing district.
Eagle Ridge? Eagle Ridge Apartments?
Yes, correct.
Not to get totally off the subject, but would we look at the master plan for this whole area? Can you get Blair's zoning map for that whole strip of road too?
It's all commercial manufacturing.
I got it noted on the, it's kind of interesting, if you, so if you look at my report, I have it boxed out there, the, their zoning and their future land use are mentioned as the same, commercial manufacturing.
Okay. And even, but that's, that's housing that's going in there, two point three hundred units of housing, so.
It's pretty wide open.
Right.
It's the uses that are permitted, yeah.
That's, and that's, but that's going in quickly, so.
Brad, to kind of add to Joe's question and statements, what I understand that your urgency with what you're looking at doing needs to happen sooner than the master plan process we're entering into for the whole township, which would, you know, possibly wrap your interests up into it and would lead to an opportunity to, for the master plan to more, more directly support the, because right now, I think what John's getting at is that the, our master plan is, doesn't so much support some of what you're doing, what you're asking us to do. So what's your timeline, is what I'm getting at?
Step by step, I'm seeing the road right now, like I said, I've gotten a couple, three quotes on the north-south road. I haven't had meetings with them, so I don't know if the horseshoes in on it. I do know it's tied into the east-west road. That includes pretty much all utilities except for one or two maybe. So I'm already at that steps. What I'm doing is gathering all my information, grabbing my information from you guys. And now, this winter, as I'm going, I'm taking this presentation to my board, saying, this is what I've done, this is what I've sold, here's our cost, here's what our profits were, if there were any. Right now, it's starting, with the cost going up these development roads, I'm like, I mean, I, it went up, I bet you a thirty percent, forty percent since my original just written, you know. I went to the, the guys at different, Molon and Elmer's and I said, just give me a quick numbers, I don't want you to spend a lot of time, I need to know if this is even worth it, to work on this. They go, yeah. They gave me that and that was like early summer. And I went back to them and said, I need higher numbers, guys. And, I mean, they put me back in my seat, you know, I mean, it was...
Elmer's doesn't have to travel very far, they're right across the street.
Over forty percent higher.
Wow.
I mean, hydrants are double. I mean, just the steel, the hydrants are just double what I saw a year ago. And I mean, it's just nuts. So, that being said, I need to gather my words and, so yes, I'm progressing. This development has a good chunk of money, depending on what I develop and what I don't. They're like, I'm not going to give you all of this unless we guaranteed you're going to develop this road.
No.
Basically. And I'm like, I need time. So yeah, I'm, I'm in and I'm, I'm full bore and...
Well, if you kind of go back to step one, you know, okay, we're here for a conceptual review, okay? Conceptual review, we look at it, we kind of, we give you, you know, a warm and fuzzy feeling, are we, are we in? Okay, and I'm speaking just for myself, okay? I like it, but in order for us to rezone the forty, I'm with John, it's got to be a bigger, it's got to be a bigger thing. It's got to be the commitment or the road, the road, the forty and the thirty-eight. What happens up front doesn't bother me as much, but for us to justify the rezoning, which I think has got to happen first, in my, from what I'm hearing, I, I think the road's got to be part of that rezoning, you know, and then, and then the shifting of the residential. And other than that, I, I don't conceptually have a problem with it. And that's kind of what we're here for tonight, so that's just me, so I don't know maybe that's, that's about it, so.
Yeah, you heard a lot more creative problem solving that I was expecting you're going to hear. I think it's a conceptual review and I think everybody sort of that's spoken kind of likes the concept.
It's cute, because, you know, I got the east-west road, I put in, and I went forward, I said, I got to put this, this road in. They go, why do you want to put it in so much further? I'm like, you got to have road, sell more lots. And they're like, just right to here. They give me that and that's what I just keep on run to, I feel like I got baby steps and just try, so if I develop this and get a road up to here, my board, and I'm just telling, maybe I'm just venting too much, but, those guys, we're, I'm like, so I only get to develop that much more to my board too, so I'll leave it alone. Thanks for all of that.
Well, ultimately, if you do decide to...
I want to go big or go home. I want to just the whole thing done.
Yeah, ultimately, if you decide to apply for rezoning, I'm open to that section. So there's eight factors, so take a look at them if you decide to attempt that and talk to us ahead of time.
Oh, I will.
But, yeah, it's, the applicant has the burden of justifying the amendment, so you're going to have to, as part of like an impact statement, look at that and one of them is the change condition. So what's the difference between, there might be a road in this general area versus, we have engineered a road and it's going to go in right here, versus a road is going to be constructed, something along that line. So, they have to be strong arguments and we are going to go through every single one of them as you make them, so just keep that in mind as you do that.
Heard, done.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, you guys, got enough conceptual review for one night? Okay.
A lot more detail than we normally see in a conceptual review.
No, thank you for coming in.
All right, next up on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment? I think we ran out of public, all right. We'll close it and move along. Next is other business, do we have any other business?
We do not.
Then the next item is items for our next agenda, which will be in two weeks from tonight. Anything on the hopper yet?
Can we get back to a study session?
Yeah, it will be your first study session since October and we'll be focused on the master plan.
We'll also have the annual report, annual report to the township board.
All right, sounds good.
And just a reminder, take a look at that, at your calendars regarding February twenty-eighth and let us know if that works for you.
Take a motion, will you adjourn?
We're adjourned.